Alright. So they all, maybe everybody could just put their screens on and then clerk and then ensure attendance. Great. Welcome here, Councilor Kuntzen. Councilor Woodmarsh?
You, Blair. There's Eric.
Yeah. Alright, good morning, everyone. Certainly a beautiful day out there, a beautiful weekend, and hopefully everyone had a chance to enjoy that great sunshine over the last few days. So today's meeting is really a workshop. It's a whole meeting is called for the purpose of a workshop, and I'm looking forward to, as I hope everyone has, a good discussion regarding some of the items that we've asked to be put onto this workshop. It's gonna be a very full day. It looks like there's lots to talk about, and Gord McIntosh will be pretty much leading, leading the whole day. I will assist him with the speakers list, because I can see the hands, and it just makes it easier for him. But as this is a workshop, I think it'd be quite appropriate to, and we want to keep it informal, so keep it informal first name basis. Let's have a good discussion on some of the items that we have here, and, and go from there. It is in the form of a, a meeting, but only for the purpose that was struggling with how to handle these things in, in a COVID era where our workshops are open to the public, but with the current rules, calling in a meeting, having, having it streamed, that allows people who want to attend, attend to observe. But, and, and for that reason, when I discussed with the clerk, we went this route, but really, it's, it's a workshop, and, and I think we can keep it that way as a, an informal workshop, and Gord has planned out a pretty good day for us. So with that, you know, call the meeting to order, and there is an item to, as a formality to adopt, receive the agenda items, and so I'd ask for a motion on that.
Motion, Davis.
Davis in secondary. Okay, and I got, Kim, your hand is up if you want to.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a comment, and as well as I have a question, and my first, my comment is, calling this as a special meeting means that we do have an obligation to behave according to the procedure bylaw, which is why I submitted a extensive number of notices of motion that I did submit. And the reason why I submitted those notices of motion is because I believe those are the topics that should frame our discussion around the budget. So I'm, originally, I was very upset to see them put on at the end of the agenda, because I don't know how we can go through the agenda without talking about each of these items. And it's the same thing as when we go into other workshops with Dr. McIntosh, when he basically says, bring a list of the things you want to discuss. Well, this is my list of the things that I want to discuss as part of how do we reform the budget process. I am content to leave them as notices of motion under other business, provided we do talk about each of them, or not the motions themselves, but the topic areas of the motion, as part of the framework around what we're discussing. So that's my comment, Mr. Mayor. My second item, which was a question, is I don't understand why we have an agenda here, which basically is about budget process being expanded to include council process committee and strategic priorities. My understanding of this workshop, when it was determined that it would go ahead, was being done so that we could deal with the budget process reformation. So that's my question. Thank you.
Thanks. And, and again, I think this workshop is council's workshop, so however council wants to, or frame it, you know, I'm fine with that. I think Gord will lead that. The, the only reason, I believe I spoke with staff, you know, it was quite a while ago, I gotta scratch it back in my head and go back in my memory, some of the items that were for council process committee isn't to unpack them or discuss them, it's just to say, just to kind of prior, do a prioritization of when we want to get to those, because, you know, there's, and, and also as a reminder to council of what's still out there, that we have referred to either CPC or to, or to this type of a workshop. So, you know, it's, it's there for our information. If we want to just do, you know, at some point, go through and prioritize when we want to get to these, I'm happy to do that. But again, this, you know, workshop and all, Gord has, provided us with a bit of a framework, and we'll go, we'll go with that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Gord, and we'll have that discussion.
I think you have got Bob.
Yeah, I had my hand up, I think before.
Yeah, I was just answering that question. Yeah. I don't think so. But anyways, go ahead, Bob. It doesn't really matter. We're, we'll get to everybody.
Well, to me, it does matter, because I object vehemently to the agenda, and I object to what's being done here by Council Rick, then by Council Woodward. Now, you're gonna let me finish here. I'm gonna refer to these emails that were sent out on March 31st, where it was suggested by Council Win, Woodward, that we, you know, fill the, the meeting with notices of motions, and, and then the objections by Council Rick. So I just find it to be appalling behavior, you know, almost reprehensible behavior of sitting councils to sabotage the workshop. So I object. So I am objecting.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Long is out of order and needs to be ruled as such.
Definitely not out of order. I'm speaking to the adoption of the agenda. The agenda has been hijacked by a council, and I object to it. And I'd like that recorded in the minute, in the minutes. Thank you.
Thanks. So we're gonna back up a little bit. This started at the beginning, and that way I said, let's keep this as informal.
This is why we should not have had this as a special meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I didn't, it's semantics. I didn't think would make, I didn't think it would be that controversial, and it was in my discussion with the clerk on, on how, on how to call this.
But your worship, it's not controversial, it is only some kind of a controversy to certain councils. This is a workshop, we're supposed to work together, and 19 notices of motion on there is hijacking the workshop.
We've, we've heard you, and, and Counselor Richter has already stated, leave it at the end, we can deal with it at the end, I think.
Well, that's procedure, isn't it?
What I've, what I would ask any member of councils, the council, if they wanted to, had a time, provide some information to, to assist in, in what they want to bring to the workshop. I have no problem with that. Counselor Richter did it in the way of notice of motions, and I think Counselor Richter has stated that she's happy as long as we can, it can form part of our discussions, and I think that's fair.
Well, she did it as part of a deal, a scheme.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Long should not be allowed to behave so juvenile at these workshops or at our council meetings.
You shouldn't be interrupting.
Okay, we're, let's, let's get some.
Who's, who's running this meeting, by the way?
Let's get some order.
Counselor Rick has already seemed to.
Okay, Counselor Long, let's put it aside, and let's start over again. Okay?
Well, I, I wish you would.
Yeah, we have to move on. Okay?
Yeah, we're all okay.
Thank you.
You gonna call a vote?
No. I go on the speaker here. Eric?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I, I think that the irony here, of course, is these agendas, the discussion items are, of course, set by the facilitator. So I, I think a notice of motion is not intended to sabotage. I think a notice of motion is intended to add discussion items that can be managed on block, can be, you know, handled. So I, I hope it's not taken that way. And of course, I object to Counselor Long's framing of it in that, in that, in that form, and I look forward to getting on with it here, and I don't really know what the point of all this faux outrage is for. Thank you.
Okay, so let's just put that behind us. It's a beautiful sunny day, we're gonna move forward, we're gonna have a great discussion today, and, and I think, as Counselor Richter stated, to put it in his notice of motions, it could have been a list to, to this workshop for items of discussion. I think it would be great to have this, a discussion where we have an open mind, and, and review these with the leadership of Gord, who will take us through, and perhaps, once we've had a good discussion through the day, it's gonna be a long day, is take this forward, what we've discussed, to another meeting where it's, it's not a work, it'd be a meeting specifically for, for, you know, budget purposes, and take some of the items that we've, we've learned from today to that meeting, rather than trying to make decisions today, would be my hope that we could just have this as a workshop, and then come back with direction another time, once we've all had a chance to digest it. So I'll have to call the question on this, because this bit of the formality. So all those in favor of the agenda, and opposed?
I'm opposed.
And Counselor Long opposed, it carries. Okay. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Gord, and, and I say, my, my part in this will be to participate just like everyone else, but I'll also help him with the speakers list. So we'll use the hand raised. I think that's the only way we can do it on Zoom, and we'll, we'll turn it over to Gord. And welcome here. I know you're on, at your home today, and it's, it's a little bit different again, but you've, I think we're all getting used to these sorts of ways of communicating in workshops. It's not ideal, but it's, we're, we're learning to adapt. So Gord, take it away.
Great, thanks a lot, Jack. Well, good to see everybody. So where did the agenda come from? So not to rehash the agenda. One, out of the last session, there was a desire to make sure we regularly update the strategic priorities. So that was in the summary memo that came back. So that was from the previous session. That's three parts to that. One, get a progress report on where we're at, because good to see one's actually off the list. See if anything needs to be discussed, but it's also a time, if you recall, as Kim indicated, if there are other items you'd like to unpack, and in the past, we've said, hey, let's go around, get one from everybody, just so there's equal, equal airtime, and if, if we have more time. So that's the strategic priorities. The second thing that came up at the last session was budget guidance, budget, looking at the budget process. So I tried to put a, a little bit of a framework together. It is, by the way, a, a challenge all across the country. You know, we were just talking earlier how two, two provinces have just been through elections, Saskatchewan and Nova Scotia, four more, Alberta and Yukon are going this year, B.C., Ontario, Manitoba are going next year. What does all that mean? Well, it means a lot of people are really looking at their budget process, plus you have COVID. So very timely to look at the process, you know, the timing, look at what we want as a product coming forward, what are some principles, some assumptions, but also, if you recall, one of the areas was to look, are there some areas of interest for closer scrutiny services in particular? So is there anything that we can guide staff to prepare a, a, a budget package that council has all the information it needs to make good decisions? So that's the second item. The third item that came up, I'm not sure what, I don't believe it was from the previous session, I think it might have come from council, I'm not sure, was CPC. We have a list, and do we need to prioritize that list to make sure that we're giving, you know, these emerging items, I think you call them notices of motion, some discussion. Along the way, we also talked about practices. I think Kim had mentioned, you know, sort of some guidance around staff contact, and I can provide some guidance on that. So three parts to the agenda. I just put an order to them, but we can change the order, and if you don't mind, I'd like to just quickly make sure we're all on the same page, as you know, and just see, with that explanation, order the CPC items, refresh the strategic priorities, discuss any emerging items, and do some good work providing some budget guidance. So with that, Katrina, how are you feeling about the agenda?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, Blair? Good? Yeah, thumbs good. A thumbs good.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, welcome, everybody. I made it. How many people? This is the first world problem. You won't have to worry about this, Gord. I was stuck in, in a sandwich at Costco for my gas, between a truck and a whole bunch of cars. That's why I was late today. That's the first world problem. Okay, no, everything looks fine. I just want to make sure we're always ready for challenges that come up with COVID and other things. These are emerging times, as we all know. But other than that, very, very good. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Kim?
Yes, I'd just like to say that as long as we don't spend over half the day on items one and two, and not get to three till this afternoon, I'm okay with this agenda. I also think that, and I have raised this at past workshops, Dr. McIntosh and I will continue to raise it until the behavior ceases, but Counselor Long's disruptive, vindictive, and juvenile attacks on certain members of this council.
Okay, okay.
It's not appropriate, and hinders our effectiveness at both council meetings and in these workshops. So I think that needs to be addressed as well, and I've thought that since the beginning of this term.
Thank you. Margaret?
Yeah, thank you. I'm good. Gord, thanks for coming and helping us out.
Yeah, thanks. David?
Always a pleasure to see your face, Gord. Fine. I, 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 not to get too technical and, and plowed down, but the budget guidance is very much connected to other business. So I, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna play it as we can. Let's get it done.
Yeah, great. Jack? Jack?
I'm muted. It's, it's the COVID muting, unmuting thing. I remembered unmute. No, I'm good. I think it's great. We'll have a good discussion, like I said earlier. I think I've said what I need to say. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Did I get you, Bob?
Of course not.
I left you to do the sweep.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I like your agenda, and I, and I think you're running the workshop. So, you know, these comments made by other counselors, I, I guess they're allowed to under this format, but I, I, I find them objectionable, of course. But I'm here to, to work with you and, and your agenda, but the agenda that we've adopted has these other 19 items on it, which, as you know, I've stated earlier, is just, is totally inappropriate.
But we're gonna deal with it in a different manner, so hopefully that.
Right.
Yeah. Eric?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think there's not much, I don't think there's any changing in anyhow, so I guess let's proceed.
Okay, well, happy to, you know, any consideration, or what are you thinking, Eric?
No, I'm good. Let's just get on with it.
Okay, okay. So I've tried to, I, I understand emotion, I understand all that kind of stuff. So of course, as a facilitator, I try and provide the objective tools. So let's start with the CPC items. And just a reminder, the task, I think, is only to prioritize them, not to unpack them. And so we have then the bold items, and I put the dates on them, so you could see how some, how, dare I say, how old they are. So the bold ones have come from notices of motion previously in a council meeting, and in your notepad, I provided, thanks to Wendy, sort of all the details behind. The second list on the bottom are the items that were left over from our last workshop, and so I've loaded them up there as well. So two thoughts on how we could prioritize these for CPC meetings. One is, is the information ready? You know, I mean, if the information's ready, and there's a proposal, wow, that would seem like it's an easy win to get through it and get it done. The other would be, is there some urgency? So trying to move beyond emotion and passion, because each one of us probably has some passion and emotion about some of these. Is there an urgency? And, you know, typical urgency, we've said, is there a legislative requirement? Is there safety issues, et cetera? Is there a timeliness, which is kind of the opposite? Timeliness means, wow, this is a unique opportunity, metro's ready, or there's a grant ready, you know, something's really timely. Or there's a bigger picture at stake here, and we need to take this first step to be able to move on to this bigger strategic item. So with that in mind, let's start with, and we can just get high, medium, low. So election and sign by law. And I'll go to staff. Is that ready? Mark? I'm just gonna slip, I'm gonna slip into this mode so that I can record here. Is that something that's already been prepared?
I believe it's partially prepared. I'll turn it over to Wendy, because I think she's, she's shepherding that.
Yes or no?
Yes, actually, council wished to discuss some proposed changes, and their staff has prepared a memo to go with it, so it could go at any time.
Okay. Public art policy. I'll just get the readiness first, and then, and then we'll go to council on order. So public art policy.
So effectively ready, same, same as the previous one?
Okay, procedure by law.
Wendy?
That was to be a continuing discussion on it, so it could be slotted in wherever.
Yep, it's ready?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it is.
Progressive affordable housing.
Again, this is something that was sent to CPC for further discussion. So as I understand, the discussion we've had previously is that when council refers things to the, the process committee, it's so they can have a fulsome discussion, given the information they have, and then direct staff further.
So is there a report, a proposal, a?
Yes, I believe the report was forwarded to CPC already.
Yep. Willoughby neighborhood plan.
For Ramon.
Is that ready? Is it a proposal? I'll come back. Childcare, I'm gonna keep us moving. Childcare action plan, has that been prepared?
Yes, again, that was one that went to council as a, a completed report, and council returned, referred it to CPC for further discussion on it.
Okay, social sustainability strategy. Maybe it's, I, I didn't see in the minutes that that was a, it was just a concept, an idea, right?
There was no report to go with that one. I believe that staff needed further direction on what exactly council wanted included with it.
Yeah, that's why I put the question mark. Yeah. Okay, back to Willoughby neighborhood plan, Ramon, or somebody?
Oh, I can't add anything to what Wendy has said already, in that this was referred by council to the future CPC for more fulsome discussion.
Is it ready? It's, it's written, it's done? It's a proposal?
There's nothing to do at this stage until we get further disdirection from council.
Sorry, let me be clear on the question. Is there a document with proposed zoning standards?
Is there a document with what?
With the zoning standards. Is there something for them to look at?
Well, there are, there are neighbor plans, and there is zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Okay. So the first task is, if there is nothing to look at, then, you know, it tells us a lot that there's not a readiness for it. So that was simply the first part. Okay. So let's go for, what, Kim?
Yes, I, I have a question of clarification.
Yeah.
As a result of one of these workshops that we had, I believe it was last year, we made the determination that before we start sending staff down the path of doing a lot of work on something, that we needed as a council to take a policy decision on whether that would be a policy that would require staff resources to be put into it.
Yes.
So some of these things got sent to CPC for precisely that reason. As an example, the childcare action plan includes subsidized daycare as a topic, and I think council needs to address the question of, is township of Langley in the business of providing subsidized daycare? Yes or no? We haven't made that decision, but there are a number of fallout decisions that are facing us now as a result of that particular action plan. So even if there's no documents, it's probably because it's a policy issue that council needs to take a stand on. And that's why some of these things are here.
So the why is, I'll just put T, T, whoops, sorry, T O L, rule, and staffing, right?
And, and resources.
And, and I'll put, and put dollar. So that's why they're here. It's not so much the document. Okay. So let's go back and say, in our view, and why don't we just go roundtable and just, which one, or, I'm just debating which one to do. Why don't we do each one? High, medium, or low? Election sign by law. Somebody start us, and then we'll see.
Aye.
Group hug? Anybody?
It's, it's, I would just say it's, it's time, it's time sensitive, because there is, we, we expect an election in, in fall, hopefully not like.
Okay, that's a good argument.
So it needs to be done at, at some point prior to that, so that the bylaws can be, can be amended. So that would be high, because it's time, you know, time sensitive, but that might be the fall. I, I don't know. Staff would have to help with that.
Yeah, well, we'll order them, and.
Okay.
Public art policy. High, medium, or low?
Low. Aye.
Medium. Anybody else?
Aye.
And David?
Yeah, I'll go high as well.
Yeah, David has.
I would, I, I would, I, I, well, my hand's up, but I, um, um, I, I was gonna talk on the election, but I, this is on the public art policy. I, I would say medium.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're, at this point.
Medium to high, medium.
Yeah. Eric, and then Steve?
Yeah, I'm, I don't think I'm gonna jump in with trying to rate items. I mean, I just find that a bit strange. I mean, to me, they're all important, so I know that sounds silly, but, you know, I think for me, this highlights pretty especially what I've been saying for a couple of years, that council process committee doesn't function. When you've got items on there for, you know, two years, it's pretty clear that that's where you send stuff that you don't want to deal with, and that's, that's kind of how it feels to me. So for example, the procedure by law, you know, we addressed about a third of the recommendations, and the rest of those brought forward by the rest of us, you know, I've been sitting there for two years. And so I don't really want to jump in there and say high, medium, low. I don't want to say that someone else's initiative is low priority. I wouldn't want that said about my initiative. So I'm, I don't think I'm gonna participate in that, but I think, again, I think all we're doing here is highlighting how this committee doesn't function. Thanks.
Okay. So as you look to the months ahead, let's put it in context, what we're trying to do. You're trying to create a prioritized CPC agenda, so that staff are very clear what to bring in May, June, July, August, September, right? That's what we're doing. So these hopefully do not sit forever. So that's kind of the attempt. But, so thank you. Steve, and then Kim.
Yeah, it's, it's great to have to follow after Eric. Those are good points, Eric. I mean, those happen, I would think those kind of points happen, every council, probably every community in the province, you're gonna have people disagreeing, provincial and federal policy, people disagreeing on items and, and other things. We even have people disagreeing whether COVID exists or not. I mean, that's, it seems like that's just how things work. Now, you know, whether they're a priority of low, medium, or high, it all depends on the circumstance, and I really believe that, you know, we're not even open at the hall here. I mean, it's, you know, it, we're all meeting here in, on Zoom. So I would say the public art policy probably is medi, medium, but it's, it's really hard to rate these under the circumstances we're under, and in. Now, I don't know, and maybe staff can help us, on the election, the federal, provincial, do we have any control over where they put their sign? I know they probably try to follow our bylaws, but do we have any control over that? If I may, is it, can staff answer that?
Um, yes, yes, Council Ferguson. Both provincial and federal election must abide by our sign by, our political sign by law.
Okay.
What if, Wendy, what if we said to them, oh, we don't, you can't put anything, and you can't even handle leaflets or anything? We're not allowed to do anything at T O L. What would happen then?
Uh, there's be nothing we can do about leaflets, but sign by laws actually, for elections are, are, are responsibility. So that's the way that one goes.
Yeah, I'm backing up the bus here. All, otherwise, we will not get to budget guidance. We're not.
Okay, that's fine with me, yeah.
We're not unpacking these items. The intent is to get these prioritized, that the next CPC, we should all expect to see an item on that agenda very clearly, right? That's what we're trying to do, and then you can unpack it. Kim?
Um, thank you. I think the issue here is not the topics or their order, but the number of CPC meetings that we don't have. The CPC meetings, if they were held monthly, and there was a dedicated day to them, we could be through these in like two months. The problem is that we are only adding on an hour, or maybe two hour long CPC meeting on top of an eight or a 10 hour council meet, meeting agenda, and that format is not working. So I, I think rather than address the topics, we should be addressing how we do CPC meetings. Like, why don't we have them on a separate standalone day, one a month? And if we have to have a different day than Monday, we have to have a different day than Monday. It's not like we can't attend meetings on days other than Mondays, particularly in the COVID realm that we're in right now.
Um, so can I suggest a bold type there, that regardless of the frequency, regardless, we would still have to know the order, and I commit. and I commit that as soon as we ordered them, I care it here, uh, we'll come back to look at the format and the frequency. Does that meet everybody's, is that okay with everybody? Okay, uh, so we will come back. It's a good point. I just generally across the country, uh, just an observation, if it's helpful. Uh, when we see uh misalignment, uh, often um in values or discussions, it's often because um counselor, elected officials with different values and different perspectives don't have what I call cabin time, you know, that casual time just to unpack stuff and hear each other, you know, respectfully hear each other's uh views. And there's a whole history of why that happened, which is unimportant for today. But many have gone to um uh committee the whole uh in the absence of the committee system, and they've been using it as a dress rehearsal for business meetings. And so many councils actually got rid of committee the whole or CPC and have nothing. And that erodes uh our understanding of where people are coming from. So encourage you to sustain it. Let's come back and talk about uh how to make it work. Uh, Jack, and then I'll come back to regardless of whether it's every week, every month, every quarter, uh, we do need to maybe figure out what's uh next on the docket, which topic is on the docket. Uh, Jack?
Yeah, no, thanks. Uh, I think it's uh good to hear that. I know we, we just went through uh budget process and had uh additional meetings put on. And I think that kind of took some of our capacity or time uh for CPC, but certainly CPC uh on a day that's like we're doing today, it's separate from council meeting, we're having a chance to talk, I think is one way to go through. These are all, as far as ranking, um, I, I agree, these are all important, they've all been sent there by council, but some have time sensitivity. And uh Steve had mentioned, there's uh an election, who knows when the federal election is called, and then our sign by law, it would, you know, hasn't been updated, so that, you know, may, you know, we've already ranked it as a high because of the time, but they're all important, and I think um based on that and the childcare action plan, we're hearing a lot of information on that, so those things could be uh put on the agenda quicker. Um, and uh again, I'm quite happy we have a day like today, uh, in this, it's April, so May, June, July, we, we spend, we spend a, a day uh opposite, uh not on a council day to delve into these, uh, just like we did the budget.
Okay, so we could do a schedule and uh we'll come back to uh frequency, okay? Um, so I've got uh, I mean, uh, so why don't I jump there? Uh, childcare action plan, do we have a s- sense that that is high? And I've got uh Kim and then Mark.
Yeah, um, I don't agree that it's high. I think we're being pressured by a political agenda that it's high, and I reject being pressured by political agendas outside of this council's agenda, so I would put childcare action plan as a low right now compared to the other things we have to deal with.
Okay, um, uh, I think it was Mark and then Patrina.
Uh, thank you, Gord. Just a, a brief interjection. Um, there's a couple that I think have some time sensitivity in that they must be completed, I believe, by the end of this term. Particular, the election and sign by law, because while there may be provincial or federal matters, we certainly need that in place prior to the municipal election in twenty-two. Uh, Wendy, can you uh advise as to the ones that have that time limit, that they must be done by the next election?
Um. By the next election, just the election and sign by law, we need to be done? If council wanted to make any changes to the procedure by law, that one we could continue the discussion on uh prior to the next council. Uh, although that one can easily carry over as the next council can make changes as well. Uh, I believe those are the only two that have hard deadlines.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Margaret, uh, sorry, no, Patrina.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to speak actually to the childcare action plan, and so I, I guess I agree that it's medium. Um, I know there has been a lot of um petitioning and lobbying, uh, I think specifically due to COVID uh concerns and childcare in general, uh, the lack of affordability. My only point about that is there is, I think, some timeliness because the federal government has just announced that there is uh some funding, uh, however one looks at that, about the rollout. But I always look for opportunities for us to advance uh potential positions based on uh the government coming forward with money, a level of government other than ours. So that's why I would give that at least a medium, because I do think it's important in our community.
Great, thanks. So I've got um, um, childcare, and again, just a reminder, they're all important. We're just trying to order what's gonna happen in May, June, July, August, so we can clear this uh deck. Uh, procedure by law, any sense, uh, is there any sense of urgency around that, or is that kind of a, a medium? Uh, Kim and then back to Patrina, I think, unless you.
Okay, well, I'm, I find this one very frustrating because we started out with very good intents at the beginning of this term to get a procedure bylaw in place that this council has endorsed and supports and functions by. Unfortunately, we got stalled in that work and uh only a handful of resolutions wanted by um uh some people got pushed forward. Um, those resolutions seem to be working for the most part. Uh, but I hate leaving things unfinished, and even though I hate leaving things unfinished, at this stage, we're like halfway through our term. So it could be a low as well, uh, just because I, you know, with everything else we have to deal with, we might not even get around to it.
Okay, uh, I think uh Eric?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to that. I think that that's probably for me, one of the main ones that's been frustrating to watch, so as a council early on, I think we try to learn from this rather than get too bogged down in it. I mean, tried to come forward with a bunch of amendments that this council might have wanted to see and debate, at least have them heard. Um, you know, the risk of, I don't wanna try and upset anybody, but the mayor's uh suggestions got reviewed, debated, and adopted, and the rest of ours have been sitting for two years. And I think that that's frustrating and that, that really, you know, that creates a lot of problems, and it, and it sort of illustrates some of the challenges of this committee. Um, to me, the election's bylaw was important a year ago, um, especially when we saw a by-election come up, so this idea that things can be left for years uh because they're not urgent, I don't agree with. I'd prefer that they just be done in the order they were referred and the order they came up, and now we're changing that order based upon, pretty, you know, we're not voting on that order, we're just, whoever shouts out, I guess, gets it ordered the way they want, and I don't really think that's much of a process. Um, you know, those are, those amendments to the council procedure by law were put forward in good faith two and a half years ago, and they haven't even been heard. And uh here we are now discussing the childcare action plan, so um, for me, this is a difficult, challenging process. I don't find this much of a process, so I guess whoever shouts out whatever they want um is gonna be successful, and I'm not gonna do that, so I guess uh things will continue to sit. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so I've got a kind of a mix, you can see the mix there, so uh the, maybe let's try and see if there are some uh ones that we definitely think are low. Uh, so we go the opposite way. Uh, the social sustainability strategy, at this point, there is nothing. It's a discussion whether we even wanna pursue it. Would that be a low? At this point, relatively speaking, on these items.
Uh, Dr. McIntosh?
Yeah, uh?
Yeah, so he- here we are, you said we don't wanna unpack these topics. But um, you know, they're pretty general. I mean, eh, 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 is there, is there no uh background, a bit more background that can be discussed? Because if we're gonna try and prioritize, I think we have to have a little bit of unpacking. Um, and, and perhaps my memory fails me and I couldn't find any documentation with the meeting, but these are pretty broad uh topics from my mind.
Yeah, they are, and they were presented, uh, and there's extensive in your note. I presented all the back, uh backdrop uh to each one of these. Um, so uh, I guess the challenge is that if we wanna unpack any of these, uh, then we should be doing that in the next round. Um, at this case, people are frustrated with CPC. We've talked, uh, there's stale dated items, I, I hear that, and so all we're trying to do is say to staff, here's, bring these back and change perhaps uh the frequency, so that's, so I'm not really intending to detail these other than this is the stuff that should come back. Hey, I think if you get two highs out of this, two, two that should come back in May, uh, that would be awesome. And then the rest maybe uh unfold, so uh that's the suggestion. Uh, Kim?
Yeah, on this one, basically, I don't think it's an urgency right now because we've got too many other fires to put out, like getting the local economy regoing, getting our programs up and functioning in terms of what the community actually want. I think this is a nice to have. I don't think it's a need to have. I would give it a low priority. Uh, it's already past its, its date because it was referred for the twenty-twenty-one budget discussions, we've already done that. But I think probably one of the subtext items around here is in some of the social sustainability stuff that we're getting, uh, we're getting a lot of what I consider to be provincial downloads in these reports, and I'm very reluctant for us to willingly step up and say, hey, send all these provincial downloads to us. We have unlimited pockets, we'll take them on. We don't have unlimited pockets, and sometimes the consultants that are used, sometimes the advisory committees that are put together that form these reports don't understand the economic realities of what it is we have to deal with. So that to me is part of a policy discussion we have to have. Going forward, when we do these types of social side reports, do we need to make it perfectly clear to the consultants and to the staff and to any of the advisory people that are giving input on this report that they must consider the costs, period? The down the road costs, so I would say it's low, we need to talk about it, but not now.
Yeah, so we've got uh on the sustainability strategy, unless I'm hearing otherwise, uh, we're not even there yet, directions needed. On the childcare action plan, again, uh, direction is needed to uh to proceed. Um, on the, so back to the Willoughby neighborhood plan, looking at the zoning standards. Any sense of urgency in, and that, they're all important, just trying to order based on some sense of urgency.
So Blair here.
Yeah, I, I, thanks Blair. I, I put my head down, sorry, uh Blair.
No problem. Um, yeah, the, this one, I'm not, I'm not totally uh sure, I can't remember back to then exactly why it's on the list. Um, we, we have neighborhood plans, uh, we have all the documentation for that area. Um, Willoughby is of course uh going ahead. Um, you know, um, and so I'm not sure what this one was about, to be honest, and um, like, was it to, to review our neighborhood plans and relook at them? I mean, we're, I don't know, what, three quarters or two-thirds maybe built out on the plans moving along, so for me, and uh, and maybe I'm missing something, for, for me, I would have, I'd consider this a lower one um of the list that I see in here. Probably the two lower ones for me, based on the list, are probably the Willoughby neighborhood plan and the social sustainability. And uh childcare action plan, I think, is near the bottom as well, because I think that's more a provincial issue, and we don't even know what's coming from them yet, so um, those are probably for me lower, but the Willoughby I would put low.
Yeah, thank you. Well done. Uh, uh, Patrina?
Oh, thank you, Gord. Actually, I think Counselor Richter was first, but if um, you want, yeah, let, let Counselor um Kim go first. Yeah, that's okay.
Go ahead, uh, Kim, sorry.
Oh, uh, well, on the Willoughby neighborhood plan, it's quite clear what the motion is all about. It's on page two of B one. And uh essentially, this is greenfield development. This plan hasn't really even started yet. And I think the intent of the motion was to make sure that we're okay with parking requirements, with uh, you know, strip malls that are gonna be going in right next to the highway, that sort of thing. And uh if we're gonna revisit it, we need to revisit it now before uh people start actually coming forward with uh uh building requests for that land. So I would say it's, it's high, and it's been high, 'cause this has been on our docket for like almost two years now. So I, I would put it as a high one.
Great, thanks, Kim. Uh, Patrina and then Eric?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I agree with that. Um, I, I think what's happened is, and that the language in it was around the fact, I think, that there is a misalignment, so some of these plans are newer than neighborhood plans, and some of them are fairly dated, I would say. And I guess the challenge for me would be what kind of level of prioritization do we want while we have other ongoing neighborhood plan construction, like the ones in Brookswood Fernridge? So I don't know about um staff's ability to be able to do something that I would consider to be uh an update, not a complete revamping of some of these neighborhood plans, because frankly, they don't consider many of the things now that we would otherwise find to be baseline prerequisites. It doesn't talk about climate action, it doesn't talk about reducing transportation. It does in general terms, but I think that they, the way that it translates into the kind of community that we're building, there is a disconnect between what we now want to see in those communities and what the vision was when we first came up with some of the older plans. Thank you.
And was that uh, yeah, was that a high or a medium or a low, Patrina?
Um, I, I would, I would give it a high, because there's lots of areas that haven't been developed yet in Willoughby, and I think it would be prudent to get that done before there's, you know, a huge movement towards continuing on the same trajectory that we have.
No problem. Yeah, I just missed that. Uh, Eric?
Uh, yeah, I agree with Counselor Long initially. I think we do have to unpack these just a, a bit to try to rate them. I mean, I, I, for me, we don't give up on modernizing community plans because they're half-built out or two-thirds built, so we don't give up on them. Um, so for me, I mean, I think that this is, again, illustrates again the, how CPC is used politically. You know, here, this was regards to a strip mall that was approved at Eightieth and Two and Fourth, you know, kind of designed from many decades ago. And of course, we get a referral, of course, that's approved, of course, it's approved, and then we get a referral to CPC to review plans, and of course, three months later, we don't even remember what we did it for. And, you know, I think that that's a concern to me, that that's what this was about. If you look in their mixed-use opportunities and sort of modernizing some aspects, not a complete review of every neighborhood plan. So how high is it? You know, I'm not sure that it, it's really that relevant to this council anyway, so maybe it's low for that reason, right? That it's not gonna, it's not gonna necessarily get a fair review, at least in my opinion. So I would prefer to sort of focus on things that most of us uh are gonna, gonna process sincerely, and, and I wouldn't do that. So I'd rate this as low, simply under the understanding that, that I don't think it's gonna be a useful uh use of our time. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, and progressive housing, any views on that one? Uh, Kim?
Yeah, this is uh one that's coming at us from totally out of any discussion we've had, really, up to this point in time. And it goes, I think, way beyond, and it is clearly a policy decision. It should we, as a municipality, be in the business of providing affordable housing? That's a policy decision. I don't think we need to do it. I think metro housing is doing it. If we're in a position to work closer or more closely with metro housing, that's something that could be taken into consideration. But I would rate this a low. It's not a priority for us to be providing, to be actually providing and running affordable housing. So eh, we've gotta have this policy discussion, and, and there's no paper behind this, like, this is just.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay, good. So as we're doing this, I, I, you know, part, I, I'm not really adept at this, but I'll just attempt to maneuver these and, and remember that we're only uh ordering them, and uh then you'll can um unpack them and uh we'll get on with the rest of our work. Uh, so, uh, just gonna take that one out, sorry. Uh, there we go. Uh, how do you, uh, uh, let's get some more views on uh the public art policy, uh, which is uh quite dated. Um, any views on um where that should sit? Uh, Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, um, this was, uh, this came out of an issue that uh occurred in the township because a uh piece of public art was paid for and placed in front of a private university that basically includes the private university's logo. And uh, and so the question then became, well, where do we draw the limits on this? We're, we're, we're promoting a private organization on public lands. And that led into getting this uh public art policy back up and needing to have a look at it. Uh, I don't see that anybody else is gonna try to do that in the near term, and I don't think we can remove the. And I don't think we can remove the piece that's already there. But uh, so that's why I don't think it's high. I don't even think it's medium. I think it's low. I think there's other things that need to come before it.
Thank you. Um, okay, so let's go uh, round table. Make sure we've got everybody. They're starting to get some sense of order. That's all we're doing. And I'm just gonna start with uh, Margaret, any sense of the order that you now see? We've got election and sign by law. Uh, I don't think we need to discuss anymore. Sounds like a group, uh, you know, a heated agreement. Public art policy um, doesn't have a high on it yet. Procedure by law does have a high on it, uh, but it's quite a range. Got the Willoughby neighborhood plan. Uh, we've got a high on that one. And then we've got a medium, low, low, low. So just uh, kind of ordering those. So Margaret, how are you feeling about uh, this order uh, for upcoming um?
Yep, I think I I look forward to talking about uh, as many of these as we can. Um, I might have a few that would be, would rise to higher, um, but I'm just gonna leave it at at um, where it's at. So hopefully we can get to most of them.
Okay. Um, Blair.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine uh, with the order. Uh, you know, I do, I do uh, value talking and working through all of them, but I do value the, the order's fine. Um, you know, there, there's some of the ones that are even down below it that I might even consider more.
Right, I was gonna go.
Important now, but uh, but although if we're looking just at the bold, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, uh, I was gonna go to those as well, and I guess I was kind of, um, I don't know the right word, honoring that above are actually resolutions, right? Uh, but I think the bottom ones could be discussed in the next round. And as Jack mentioned, could be uh, subsequent notices of motion at a meeting, if that makes sense. So uh, so we could unpack any of these uh, in our next round. Uh, so that was uh, Blair. Uh, David, how are you feeling about uh, the order?
Well, I, you know, I, um, the more, the last twenty minutes, half an hour of listening to all the input, um, you know, when we go to, when we go to these, like the election and Stein by law, I can remember looking at it and I think I was probably ready to make a decision on it. And I think where where I'm going with this is, um, you know, I've listened to everybody, everybody talk. And when we go, when we deal with something, we have to have, uh, Jack, don't take this the wrong way and Gordon, you're so, so organized. Don't take this the wrong way. We have to have effective meetings where everybody pulls up to the table. There's a deadline. We say, we need to say, we need, we need to take a decision. And I know that's partly why you're here, Gordon, i- is because you can, you can, you can work with me and I can see, you know, we, there's, there's, you're go- I'm, we gotta make a decision. So even by what we're doing here now, like, cause I, I know Blair just had mentioned the bottom and I, uh, uh, the unbold. And there's some real important ones there too. We, uh, it's real easy to, to back of the bus, so to speak. And then we don't get them done. And um, so I guess that, uh, when we, uh, when I come to the, to the table, I don't always.
We're having trouble hearing you, David.
What I want. And well, I, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not so demanding. Or, well, that's the wrong thing to say too. I didn't mean it quite like that.
How do you feel about the order though, David?
Um, you know, to prioritize some of these, you know, we, we could, like, I think Counselor uh, Kim said, you know, some of, I think it was her, we could deal with a lot of the, oh, oh heavens. Well, it's probably just as well. Maybe I'm talking too fast. I'll slow down. Um, I'll, 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 well, I guess it does, the orders, the order has to come with the subject, RCMP detachment, decision of future. Well, that's just obvious. So let, let's pick the things that we can deal with and let's make a decision on them. And then let's move on. So the, you know, the order's fine.
Yeah, that's why I need it, okay?
Yeah, you know what? Let, let, it's good. Let's carry on. I just, when, you know, we, it's so easy not to make a decision. It's really hard to make a decision. We've got to make some decisions to get these things moving along. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Bob?
Bob? See, uh, yeah, are you there? Yep, I'm, I'm still having trouble with my connection. But anyhow, the um, you know, I think the procedural by law is more important than, I don't think that hell belongs there at all. I think we want to get on with that. We had a pretty good uh, series of of amendments made, and I think if we pick that up again and go forward, that's something that might help us in some of these other areas, all the stuff that we've been hearing for the last hour or so. Uh, some concerns may be able to be addressed by, by procedural by law amendments. I'm also a, a real fan of the public art policy, so I can't see a low there. I don't think it's gonna be very time consuming. I think we need to roll something out that makes the funds that we have accessible and uh, to, to more people and let's pretty up the town a little bit. So I think that should, should have a medium to high on it for me.
Thank you.
Uh, and the social, uh, this other one here, where did it go? Progressive is affordable housing. You know, there's a bunch of question marks around that, but it's certainly an important topic. So uh, it should be at least an M. And if we need to uh, define what we have to do, uh, then let's get at it.
Right. Thank you. Um, uh, Kim? Whoops.
Yeah, um, I, I like Blair's comment with regards to uh, some of the items that are down there um, at the bottom. Uh, for example, service policy level, future of farming, Willoughby roads, uh, will, township road network, RCMP detachment. Those to me are all things that we need to deal with. They've come up this term and they need to be dealt with or staff need to be given a direction on them. Uh, and so we should be dealing with those before some of the ones that are in black up above, seriously.
I'll, I'll come back to that. Uh, so of the bold, uh, are you okay with the order?
Yeah.
And that we will go to the bottom list and we will go to CPC uh, format.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm okay with that order, I guess, yeah. But I, I still think, as, as Counselor Whitmarsh said, there are some of those things down below uh, that I believe are more important than the ones up above. Because some of the ones up above are just going to drive increased cost into areas that are not in our jurisdiction, whereas the ones below are in our jurisdiction.
And so I will commit that as soon as we agree on the bold, we will go to the bottom of the list, which could displace items and or could get added to our next round to be unpacked further. Uh, Eric.
Yeah, I've actually forgotten what I'm supposed to be commenting on. So we're, we're done with this now? Can we can, we can move forward? Yeah.
Uh, if you're okay with the bold.
Yeah, let's just keep going.
Steve? Steve? Uh, Katrina, come back to Steve.
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess I don't have too many problems with this. I'm just cautious about the fact that if we start looking at something that is a, a subgroup of what we've already identified and discussed, um, I, I'm starting to wonder a- about being disenfranchised from this whole process because the process itself is meant to guide, I thought, where all of these things are, are going to be going. And I, you know, I don't find, it doesn't resonate with me, for example, that some of these ones, we could move from uh, the bottom list to the bolded list, simply because there's a potential it could cost a township money. There are, you know, very important issues, I think, in both of them. But for example, why, why would one supplant public art policy with another one that's down below? The public art policy continues to gather money. It has no particular direction and it is something that I think is valuable to the community. So how, how to weight these kind of things? I, I'm a bit dubious about taking uh, wholesale things from the bottom list without dealing directly with the ones on the top list and taking them in or out before we're putting anything else in their spot.
Great, thanks, Katrina. Um, and uh, back to Steve if he's there and, and wrap up with Jack. Steve, we're missing Steve. Jack?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, we can. Jack, we're only dealing, uh, sorry, Steve, we're only dealing with bold items at this point. Are you okay with the order of these topics for coming up in May, June, July, August?
I, I, I'm gonna give you a test there, but, oh, by the way, I need to know one thing quickly, very, very, cause I listen. One of the main things about this council, sometimes we're accused of not listening. What does disenfranchise with the process mean? I'm lost by that comment, cause I did listen.
Uh, so the disenfranchise is uh, all the ones on the top are notices of motion. All the ones on the bottom are not notices of motion.
Oh, okay. So that's it. So, okay, other than that, I'm, I agree with Eric and others. Let's just move on. Thank you.
Okay, and Jack?
Oh, I'm fine with the order. Thank you.
Yeah. So, uh, that's uh, now let's go to uh, the items that are on the bottom. If you recall, are outstanding items that weren't totally unpacked. So I'm gonna suggest that anybody who wants to unpack those, uh, when we get to round number two, which is the priorities, uh, keep those on your radar and we can unpack them. Uh, if, if I understand it correctly, your procedure, lack of, it, it doesn't matter whether it's in a by law or not, to truly have council resolve to displace a bold item would require a notice of motion. Is that fair? So if that's fair, that means if anybody wants to unpack uh, one of those items on the bottom, uh, then let's do that in round number two. So, so let's come back to CPC frequency. Is there a desire for um, uh, administration, working with the mayor's office to uh, look at some schedule options for increased um, duration slash frequency of CPC? And I think Kim might have been first and then Jack. Or.
My hand isn't up, sorry.
Okay, okay. So, Jack?
No, I, I think uh, dedicating a day or like take a Monday, a few hours on a Monday to um, start working through these over the next uh, several months. I know um, our staff, uh, always are looking at, there's statutory holidays, there's our regular council meetings, there's other things that, that uh, that come along. But I, I think if staff wanted to look at, unless, and this is up to council, you know, it's, it's certainly happy to um, attend a meeting like today. Uh, like a month, a, a May meeting, a May, June, July, I think a lot done in three, those three before the summer break and then see where we're at after that and hopefully we can get to this list. So, but um, you know, leave that with staff for scheduling with council. That'd be my suggestion.
So I have on CPC, now I have, uh, now I do have Kim, I think.
Yeah, um, and, and I would like to echo what the mayor has said, except that I don't think it should be a um, a Monday that's the same as a council meeting Monday. I think it needs to be a separate Monday where it's just a CPC meeting. And um, instead of having a one-hour CPC meeting, maybe we should set up a three-hour CPC meeting with the intent that we can continue more if we need to continue more. Uh, I, 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 from my perspective, it's very difficult to sit, and I honestly don't know how the mayor manages to run twelve hours of meeting by Zoom. Uh, that's a real credit to you, Jack. Um, but I just think that uh, six to eight hours is maximum for us and that's what our normal council meetings go on, on Zoom, six to eight hours. So to add another two hours or an hour on top of that, i- in a Zoom context, is not a productive use of time in this format. So I would suggest that it be a separate uh, mi- Monday. Monday seems to work for everybody. Uh, and if it can't be a Monday, then we find another day, like a Friday, cause sometimes Fridays can work for everybody.
Okay. So I have uh, two uh, follow-up items. One is uh, we will now have attached to the CPC agenda, a list of uh, topics uh, ordered. Uh, two, uh, staff will come back with a suggestion for the duration, two and a half, uh, three hours. Um, not on a meeting date, uh, and come back with a proposed uh, schedule uh, to now have uh, regular CPC meetings. Is everybody okay with that? Okay? So with that, um, thank you. Uh, good, uh, now I'm gonna suggest uh, a five-minute stretch. Um, just kind of get those cobwebs out. Uh, we're gonna come back and we're gonna move to uh, three parts. One, an update on the current priorities uh, chart, just get a quick update, number one. Number two, uh, if any of the current priorities need to be discussed, unpacked or, you know, detailed, that's fine. And this would be the place that I will go round table and see if there's any other topics. I remember the uh, items that were not bolded, uh, um, sorry, um, to our previous list. Uh, so any of these items here, if anybody desired to unpack any of those or any other topics. And with the intent that we would uh, s- uh, spend time, I'm just looking at those, but making sure we don't uh, short circuit uh, good discussion on the budget guidance. So five-minute stretch, let's do a time check. Uh, let's call eleven fifteen, eleven uh, twenty, uh, is that okay? Five minute, quick five minutes? Okay, eleven twenty? As things come at us, we need to have a good discussion with them in CPC. Uh, often I would suggest a timely discussion of emerging items and just say, hey, is that a potential now item? And unpack it and that's uh, respectful. To do that, though, we need to have the uh, chart in front of us all the time, number one. Number two, to review it every quarter is my suggestion and of course to, once a year, uh, do the purge. So this is in fact our quarterly review. So with that, uh, we had some now items, uh, ASC District, uh, having a recommendation, are we still on target? Uh, and I'm thinking that would be Jason.
Thank you, Gord. Uh, we are still on target. It's broken up into three pieces, the last of which would be September.
Okay. And is there anything happening between now and September, Jason, that uh, council should be aware of?
Um, from previous uh, resolution, councils asked for two items to return uh, to council. Um, both in special closed meetings, but those will be coming over the next two months.
Okay, yeah, so that's okay. Okay, yeah, so that's okay, great, uh good work. Um next one is uh budget guidance, which of course, Dolly G, uh right on time, uh we're gonna do that today. Um yeah, remember the discussion today will just simply be the discussion and then come back in a report which. I will commit to do with uh the help of Mark. So that one is uh still in progress, everybody still okay with that? Not hearing anything. Uh COVID recovery, community impact analysis. Now notice this one has a December date, uh when personally, whenever I see a December date. That is uh over six months from now. That has the potential. Uh to uh if there's something else emerging, uh to be displaced to a next time, just, you know, showing you how to. Work with the chart. Uh COVID recovery, who's the lead on that, Mark?
Generally, it's all of S M T, uh what what we're seeing, just very, very briefly. Is it continues to change and fluctuate depending on the public health orders. Um that has impacts on on uh our labor force and as well on our service level, so. Um hence why it's in December, it evolves and we generally have pretty good discussions as emerging issues arise.
Okay, so so there's the ongoing uh response and then a more detailed analysis. Uh coming in December, is that fair?
Correct.
Yep, um I'll look for hands if anything and I know Jack will give me a hand. Uh water policy, now I did see um a note that uh we have, we're expecting Metro. To come and give us an update in uh May, is that uh correct, Mark?
That is our most recent timeline. Uh again, this is a. Aqua for Water versus Metro Vancouver Water and a representation, a report on the uh. On Metro's service levels and they have confirmed, uh have previously postponed, would have confirmed they're coming in May.
Okay, and and I'll just put a question mark after that cuz we're at the uh the mercy of somebody else, so.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely, Bob.
Yeah, I mean, it it's it's surprising how long that's taking, so uh uh wasn't it last year that we asked for this? Very early this year. So um I'm just hopeful that the project, cuz there's there's some very uh expensive projects that are sort of on hold. Um while council deliberates on whether to proceed with them or not and they and this was a major part of that decision making was the presentation. So what has that done with the with the with those projects? I guess they're just waiting. In the meantime, we're spending money on on Metro Water.
Uh I I think that's a fair assessment. What we what we've done is we've had a budget envelope that allows for both options. Filtration or additional purchases. Uh we're obviously not moving ahead with any any capital projects, so we're primarily using Metro Water as augmented with. Aqua for Water where appropriate. Um again, the delay is entirely or the timeline, not really a delay, the timeline is really with Metro. In terms of what they're available.
Well, hopefully they'll come in May, we'll get on on with it.
Right, uh last one, uh on the now item, Willoughby Library, uh we wanted to provide some direction, apparently that's been done. Is everybody okay that that will now come off? Hearing none, so uh let's do uh the next item, this is just a status. Uh we'll unpack anything uh next, next. Uh if you recall last time, uh we prioritized kinda like A, B, C. Uh high medium low, we said now, next, later. Uh any update since our last session on Hornpit Housing?
Uh yes, Gord, the um direction of council was to present some options to the public and uh. That is uh nearing the start point, I guess I would say, so it's underway. Uh and uh we'll probably have something published uh in the next uh two weeks or so.
Awesome, great. So given that it's in progress, might have the potential of of moving uh at the will of council. Uh equity inclusion framework, uh that was uh to do some research, best practices. Avoid reinventing the wheel and see what other people are doing. Any s- any update on that?
Uh just a very brief one, we um have uh surveyed other communities or I would say in in progress to survey other communities. As it's not a a now priority, it's the next priority, it's being uh I guess attended to as resources permit. Um but to to actually launch the framework would require a reprioritization.
Okay, uh thank you. And the township uh road network uh to identify. There was the big picture, but in the meantime, there was, what are some hotspots that we need to address?
Again, Gord, uh ongoing, we're very well aware of uh where there are some uh pinch points or congestion points. Um the challenge will be not so much identifying them, but how to deal with them, each has its own set of complexities. Uh Mr. Steffi, did you wish to uh to expand?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Uh Bob?
Well, this is how uh you know, issues kind of emerge as time goes on, so I'd like to put somewhere on there the the North Langley Truck Route because. Uh that's something that's been ongoing, but now it's becoming a bit of an issue. That is uh, you know, huge money to to re divert trucks and now we're hearing from those that live on the proposed truck route, so that ain't gonna fly.
Uh so I will be uh, hold that one, Bob, just for a minute and uh when we've gone through, I'll see if uh. We go round table for topics and we can add that one, how's that? Is that okay, Bob?
Sounds good, yep, bye.
Good, good work. Um I'll see if I can get that started. Um art amenity installation policy. Now, this was actually the one. Um there were two different policy issues, if I recall. One was the art amenity, which this is the one that was related to the. A university and the public art reserve uh was the other policy, right? So there's actually two different items here. So on the art amenity installation policy, any anything further on that?
So it's important, I think you summarized that very well, so those overall topics were referred here with the direction that. To sorry, to a CPC meeting, uh so that staff should not do any further work, but council could have a discussion on them, so. Right now, it's in a bit of a holding pattern till we have that discussion.
Okay, good, that's my thought. Um and you know, earlier discussion, I think the the two were kinda getting jammed up there. Um the next one was uh property, uh this is civic property, uh facility slash land. And just looking at best use, alternate use disposition, anything on that one? And again, we shouldn't expect anything's been done here. Uh these are all next items, but Mark on that one and then I'll come to Kim, back to Kim.
Yep, uh certainly, on on that one, um a bit more work has been done, background work, just because of available resources, various departments specifically. We have updated our inventory, we've updated our surplus inventory, we've been able to do a scan of uh what other communities have for. Uh property strategies and it's interesting that most do not, they may have something for the budget process, but not independent, but that is a work in progress.
Great, thank you. And lastly, uh but not least was the, oh, sorry, Kim, go ahead, Kim.
Oh, I I just wanted to backtrack to the public art reserve, the policy. Which I think is different from the installation policy.
That's right.
The two of them shouldn't be balled up together. I don't think the public art reserve policy was that was that actually referred to CPC?
Yeah, uh it it was the one that was referred to CPC, the art, uh well, I thought. Uh and the art amenity installation policy was a different one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're two separate ones. One I, uh one has a uh notice of motion. I believe that is the one from uh Eric, uh it has the notice of motion. And the art amenity installation policy does not. That's my recollection.
Yeah, I I cuz I think the public art reserve needs to be unpacked because of the monies that are sitting in there and where they go.
Yeah, and that's the one that uh has the council resolution from uh I think twenty nineteen.
Yeah, and also on the T O L property one, um it just recently came to my attention, the. Dire need for light industrial areas in communities throughout the lower mainland. And um I was speaking with uh one of the bigger developers in the township just recently. He suggested that every community in the lower mainland should be looking at putting together two to three hundred acres. Of um a property reserve for light industrial. Uh because it's it's way worse. I always thought there was a lot in Surrey, there's not, so. I think in light industrial lands need to come into that discussion around T O L properties as well.
Okay, just uh kinda put a little sidebar there, thanks, Kim. Um got seen any hands, so um and again, any of these, we're just getting an update, any of them that you want. To unpack further today, we can do that. Um and we've got uh the server.
It's light industrial, particularly light industrial. Yeah, to create jobs.
Yeah, yeah, it's that whole, whoop, okay, thanks, Kim. Um and then we had the, oh, darn, we had the service uh um. Policy slash level review, part of which uh I've got a targeted approach today. In the budget guidance, uh but this was uh perhaps bigger. And no work on that, uh Mark?
Some very preliminary work is what I would say, it's a it's a very important point and probably something that does need to be unpacked. Only because we're wrestling with them, trying to reduce, um I guess expenditures, while at the same time trying to cope with. The increasing demands and in some cases, increasing direction provide services, so we're at a bit of an incongruent point on that and does need a a bit of a discussion.
Okay, great. Um should we, uh let's, um I I'm just going to say the later items. Unless anybody wants to move any of them up, we acknowledge that they were later, uh so we wouldn't expect to see anything happening on those. Uh but I do have uh council, uh Blair.
Yeah, thanks, Gord. Um I just wasn't uh sure, uh a few years ago, we did a uh sort of a service level. Um some kind of service level, look at uh valuation of the kinds of services, like the staffing levels and that sort of thing. So what what is the, what is the the um primary focus of of this service? Uh policy level as compared to what we did a few years ago when we looked at staffing levels and and that sort of thing?
Right, a good uh good uh good comment. Um so let's see if I can help with that. Uh when we did uh about two years ago, the concern was around capacity. So given uh services and given a certain level of service. Uh did we have the appropriate um capacity? Given if we did not, there's only two things we could do. One, change the level of service. Or change the capacity and if you recall in a couple areas, uh we did. So that was really about balancing expenditures and uh revenues. Uh but for the most part, sustaining the current service level. Perhaps this one, which again is happening all across the country, is the lessons from COVID. To some degree, have brought to light, perhaps, uh there's some services that we need to relook at. Uh do we need to continue to provide them and do we need that that level? So if I've got it right. This would actually be a service level review. Do we need to provide it? Yes or no? And if we do need to provide it, at what level uh would be the difference between uh the two different sessions? Um uh Mark and then uh back to Kim.
And just to augment what you've uh said, Gord. Uh what that previous review indicated was the need to increase some staff uh levels uh. And in several areas and we addressed some of them, not all of them. Uh so we are having some challenges still with the existing service levels. We're now at the crossroads of, well, do we continue with those levels or enhance them? Or do we pull them back a little bit, which could deal with some of the capacity issues? And those issues, uh the the service levels are a bit of a priority issue and we've seen them in some areas such as a. Uh recreation facilities, uh adopt a street program, there's a whole host of uh areas where we're. Where we're trying to uh I guess make do with the uncertain environment.
Okay, uh Kim?
Yeah, um I taking a note there. Uh you know, I agree, uh service level is something that we do need to talk about. I kinda touched on it in my lengthy list of notices emotions, but um. I think in addition to the question of, questions of, do we need to provide it and at what levels? I think there also has to be a policy element in that we need to ask ourselves, is this a provincial download? Yes or no? Are we in support of undertaking a provincial download? Yes or no? And if we take a provincial download, like subsidized childcare. Uh will we be looking for full cost recovery plus? So it's the 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 funding of uh of the service levels.
Yeah, well, I think um you you nail it, uh you know, what's our mandate? Uh given our mandate, uh what services do we provide, which ones do we take on? Because you would use the same criteria to say we should not be providing this service. As you would to say we should take this one on, right? And and so that's that policy clarity that you would uh wanna have for sure.
Yeah, and if we, if we do take it on.
Yeah.
It has to be full cost recovery, it has to be, because that's not fair to take a downloaded service. And fund it out of property tax dollars.
So that might be a good discussion. Um so uh we haven't done anything on it, uh it's sitting there. Uh I am gonna move to emerging topics as you can see and so if we wanna unpack these, uh that'd be good. Uh Steve, uh any uh word?
I just, well, just really quick note, can you hear me yet?
You bet.
Really quick, quick note on, oh, by the way, the Euclidian algor- algorithm regarding incongru- incongruences, uh all usually affects different remainders. But I wanted to point out when they're doing downloading childcare or anything else, uh. Uh the influx initially is that we get a lot of money or the municipal gets a lot of money and then towards the end, it's just download, we get nothing. So that's a real challenge, opening up those doors. So I think it's important, we always note note that.
Yeah, it's that carrot, yeah. Okay, uh before we go to emerging topic, oh, okay, I've got Bob, I was just gonna close on.
Yeah, I I'm not sure where where this fits in, but I've heard several times from Councilor Richter about this childcare, um childminding and programs. And uh just because we have a youth program that happens to happen. Uh during work hours, I suppose, it could be characterized as as daycare or childminding, so. You know, when I was younger, there was plenty of youth programs initiated by municipalities. Uh and just because it happens to be between three and five, all of a sudden becomes childcare, so I mean, we have to have a discussion on that and and you know, as was said earlier. It seems like whoever shouts the loudest kinda gets heard, but uh you know, we we are in the mid- middle of a bunch of challenges. And I think we needed to find what is actually childmending, what is child services and what are youth programs? So I think that comes under the service part, because uh youth uh service or youth programs aren't always uh completely cost recovery.
Great.
But we can have a discussion about that.
Thank you, uh we'll see if that emerges. Uh advocacy partnerships, just to close off the top of the list. Uh and uh um uh just gonna quickly go through uh any significant updates. Uh Mark on any of these that A, we're making some progress or they should come off.
Uh thank you, Gord, the um I would say it this way, they're all still active. Some are progressing, some are are not going very quickly, I'm just going scanning down the list, um.
Would the library have done their presentation?
Um yes, I believe they have, all the further counselor artists, but I believe they came electronically, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so those will all uh stay. Uh so now, as we always do, um we go round table, are there any? Um topics next, assuming the now are okay, but I never make assumptions difficult. But if our now items are okay, they're in progress, are there any next items or later? Or even from the previous CBC list, uh that you would uh want to unpack today? And I will go round table, uh one per person on first round, let's see how that looks. And let's uh reverse, uh Katrina, anything that you would say in our time today? And let's reverse. Katrina, anything that you would say in our time today? You would want to make sure that we have some discussion about?
Okay, I, I jotted down just because it is an emerging issue. And it touches on some of the other conversations, I think, around staffing. But generally, the principle arising from COVID about staff working from home. And the degree to which we might consider a policy where we make that an extended policy for, for some township employees. Where that could work.
Working from home, okay, thank you. Steve?
Oh, yeah, I think, I, I, but I agree that, you know, the points made, especially the ones that are in the bowl, they're made. But it's all these other things that, that we still, you know, need to see and hear, but the water and all those other things from Metro Vancouver and. You know, our road networks and moving on and, and COVID as Counselor Anderson said, you know, I don't know how much we can rely on our senior management team to juggle it all. But it, if we continue with, I guess, the council priorities or council policy meetings on a regular basis, we might be able to sort through all this stuff. So other than that, I'm just prepared to just move ahead. Thanks.
So there is no specific topic today that you wish to discuss from the?
All, all those topics I think will come up in due course because we've got a, a number of notices of motion and other things. It'll just be the next day. You'll be surprised to see what will come up. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll take that as a no. Eric?
Yeah, I mean, I would, actually, what are we at now? Eleven, almost noon. I'd actually like to get onto the budget, which was the purpose of this meeting.
Fair enough. I'll see if there's some, a notion to that. And Kim?
Yes, I, I think we need to move service policy level up to the yellow. I don't want to unpack it today. I don't think we've got time to unpack it today. I think it does need to be unpacked. And I think a part of what we need to deal with in our discussions are the comments that were made earlier with regards to. Do we need to provide it at what levels and the, the cost recovery? And I also want to flag that this has been a very odd term in a way. Because for the first time that I can remember, I think we're being forced from external groups and perspectives into going into campaign mode, like a year ahead of time. And I, I, that's beginning to color our decisions and I think we need to ask ourselves if it should be coloring our decisions. So like I say, I, I think we need to talk about it. I don't think today is the day to talk about it, but it has to come back. And the other item that I mentioned earlier, which I think we could probably deal with under the procedure by law is Council decorum.
Blair?
Yeah, good, good things coming there. I, I certainly think that the service and policy level discussion. Is a, is an important one and maybe needs to be moved up, so I'd support that. And the, the Township Road Network, I think, is always an important topic. And probably, it probably will always be. We probably won't ever see that it's a solved item. And I, I, I am concerned as well that the Equity Inclusion Framework, we don't have a, a motion to move things forward. We don't have in a direction from council to move that forward in any way. And so it doesn't, we don't necessarily have to do it in big chunk, but we, it'd be nice to see us start moving in small ways to at least see that happening. Many other communities are, are adopting them. Certain organizations are adopting them and I think we're starting to be, fall behind in what is actually being done out there. So I'd like to see us move that at some level forward.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. Horn pit housing, I know that it's, we've got something written. Mark had said it's two weeks away. This is a nut and bolts, hammer and mortar thing. Let's, I, I, I think that could be moved up. Let's, let's move forward with that. That's something that, that I know that we're not maybe going to move it along. But let's, let's get it, let's, I would move that up. Exclusion, Equity and Exclusion, I agree that, that is something that's going to bite us. We need to be, we need to have a framework and a policy to, to deal with that. Because it, it, it goes wonky when we get it. There's, if you don't agree with, if you don't agree with people. Becomes an issue. If we have a policy, that's the way it is. And yeah, you could only ask for one, but I gave you, thank you.
Thanks.
Over.
Well, yeah, you're, that's okay. Thanks, David. Margaret?
Um, I, you know what, I, these are all, I, I can't disagree that any of these shouldn't be, you know, discussed. So I'm kind of, I, I just like to sort of get on with it right now. And I would agree that the inclusion framework and the horn pit housing, those are definitely something I want to talk about. As well as the childcare action plan and not necessarily, you know, dissect it all. But I, you know, I think that that is something that is sort of, you know, on the horizon that there is this expectation that, you know. So I'd like to, you know, as collectively as a council, discuss, you know, what, what is it that we want to, you know? What, what, how do we see township, you know, doing that? So anyway, or not.
Okay, so childcare, so what, oh, sorry, Jack? Sorry.
Thanks, yeah, I, I, you know, I think some of these are already referred to C P C like they are, I think, service policy level. Could be discussed in our, in our budget discussions. I see, I see diversity, equity and inclusion. Or another thing, horn pits on, on underway right now, so, but diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, looking at what's happening locally, nationally and internationally. And a lot of other municipalities and, and government agencies like Translink and, say, regional districts. Already ahead of us on, on, on having a framework and ensuring that we're, that we're up to speed on that. And I think that's important. And I mean, I think David kind of nailed it. Might be one of those, like, I'd call it like a sleeping giant that maybe we should be discussing. So I would move that one up because I think the others are actually working their way through. Thanks.
Thanks. Bob?
Where are we at with the R C M P detachment? That was a pretty important issue a little while ago. Have we, are we making progress on that or? Discussions read the future, so maybe staff can update us a little on that, but don't you think that, is that not a decision that needs to be made sooner than later? Because every day the prices of facility seem to go up.
Or just to comment briefly, the immediate, I guess, impact is somewhat mitigated by potential satellite or community police stations, et cetera. So that does provide a bit of time. The real issue with that though was the existing detachment. Do we expand or do we try to, I guess, maximize the existing space there? By ending any other partnerships we may actually have in that facility. So it's a bit of a medium term issue, but it certainly has significant short term and medium term complexities.
Thank you, Mark. Kim?
Yeah, and I wonder if that doesn't tie in as well under the advocacy with new R C M P C O priorities. Has a new C O been formally determined for us? Or is this still an interim basis? And even if it is an interim basis, is the interim just carrying on? With what the, the old or the previous priorities were? Or are there new priorities that are being introduced?
Any response to that or unknown?
Yeah, I could, just the, there is a process in place from there to beyond, on selecting a C O. And so that, that is underway. And so, so the once the new C O is in place, I think that'd be a more appropriate time to discuss priorities rather than with an interim.
Okay, but.
So it is.
Do we know when that's going to happen? Like, is there a target date for making that appointment?
Early May.
Early, okay, so it's imminent.
Oh, yes, imminent. No, they've, they've gone through the postings, they've, I think they've downed a shortlist and then we'll be reviewing the shortlist. And then it'll be coming back and once we have that person in place, I think that's an appropriate time. We have been, the C O, the current interim C O has reached out regarding that. And we're thinking, let's just, you know, kind of wait and see a little bit, give him an extra month.
Just so we don't recall, I just put a June question mark after that. Steve?
Yeah, it's just, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, it's funny because it seems like when I talk to my colleagues in the city, they seem to have a, a better understanding what's going on with the R C M P than us. I don't know why. I know they have their own police board. Is it the city, like, do they have a kind of a managerial part of it? Where they run the, the R C M P and then we kind of get the, the information afterwards, like a management contract? Where they would run the R C M P and then we kind of were secondary, get the information secondary? Is that the way it works?
Are, are you talking about City Langley?
Yeah, City Langley, do they run the R C M P and then we basically, like a management contract? Like, you know, we're running an organization, they run the management and then we, we either pay into it otherwise.
No, it's, I think it's, Mark could probably describe it better, but the township actually, township employees are at the detachment. And there's a formula in place, but they don't have a police board. Their contract with the R C P is, is the same as ours and how we divide.
The only way, I mean, I don't, Gordon, you, you know how this, the only way I know what's going on with the R C M P, I just talked to the people of the city. They seem to know it all.
So.
But anyway, that's, okay, that was, that's just something we gotta keep an eye on, that's all.
Okay, so I think I got everybody. So what I have, and I'm going to suggest that this is our hit list, but we will, if I've got direction right. We will go to lunch. We'll talk about that in a minute. We'll then go to budget guidance, if that's the will of everybody. And then come back to, and I'm thinking that it's this list right here. That as we have time, that we could take a look at. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay, and noting that two of them are simply, they need to get to C P C even to get some discussion, so good odds, they're not going to make it as a now item because they haven't even been discussed. And that we do have inclusion, inclusion framework, which some preliminary research has been done. We've got the horn pit housing options, which is in progress. And the service level reviews so far appear to be of some interest. They're not priorities yet. The two other topics, if I've got it right, working from home sounds, it's not a council priority. It's a topic that could be discussed. And Council decorum, if I got it right, can be discussed within the procedural bylaw discussion. So that would be kind of how to try and direct a little bit of traffic. Given that it's lunch, it just, your servants, so do we want half an hour? An hour? Half an hour?
An hour is good, yeah.
Half an hour? Okay, twelve thirty, I will come back. I'll guide you through a four step, you know, I've put together a bit of a framework to discuss budget. And so that will be the meaty part of the afternoon. Once we feel like we've done that, which by the way, service, notwithstanding the full service level review. I've also included, in the meantime, there might be some services that you do want to target for a more rapid review within the budget process. So there's two, two ways to kind of play that. So good work, everybody. I, I think we're making good progress. And we'll see you at twelve thirty. Take care, everybody. Have a good lunch.
Thank you.
Well, here we go, we're back on. We're going to move to budget guidance. I put together a, a bit of a framework. Just to hang our guidance on. And looked at, you know, different aspects that I've been involved in, different practices across the country. One, the process, and some of these will be a lot quicker than others, of course. One, the process, so just the timing. When do we start? What are our key benchmarks as we head into what will be this council's last budget? Including operating and capital. The product, one of the comments, I think previously was, you know, how to make that user friendly. Digestible. And so what's our expectations around the assembly and the, and not only the written? But also the presentation of the material. So we'll have some discussion there. Principles, are there some overarching guidance principles? I've suggested some, so when we get there, I've suggested some that are used throughout the country. Some assumptions, you know, typical assumptions are around economic modeling, growth, inflation, those sort of things. And finally, because it was brought up at the last session. Notwithstanding a service level review or whatever you want to call it. Are there any particular areas, service areas? I just called them areas of interest, keep it, that you wouldn't want to see analyzed during the process. So these would be the, for, if I've missed anything, I'm sure you'll bring it up and feel free. So let's begin journey. On process, Mark, can you give us just a, a quick thumbnail? Kind of what our typical timeline looks like and then we'll see if there's any commentary or comments.
Thank you, Gord. So ideally sometime in the May, June timeframe, we would have a session where council can identify its priorities for the, that it would consider for the following budget cycle. Then we'd actually take that information and begin to shape a budget again, ideally in the September, October timeline. With a view to advancing it and with public consultation in early January or February. One of our complications is the fact that we do rely on our prior year surplus for some of our capital projects. So in, in the ideal world, we would simply have our, our surplus flow through. We'd use it there for the following year. Right now, we are, are trying to manage our capital needs by taking some of the prior year surplus. That would be, say, for example, this year's surplus to fund our projects in twenty twenty two. Which means you really need to have a sense of what that's going to be. That's why we have our, our quarterly reporting processes where we attempt to get an idea in terms of what we could actually estimate that surplus to be to try to advance things. That then leads to some of the same challenges with the, the D C C program or the N E C A C program. Because you want to know what the ending balance is as of December thirty first, so you can begin to estimate what your, your program is. And that's effectively just a use of the cash flow that we have available to us. Some of the other things that we try to do is we try to streamline the process as much as we can by, I think, trying to go to the variable items. As opposed to the set items. So for example, where we do have something that's a known collective agreement for four years or three years with built in increases, we know that what our labor costs are going to be. So we take those as what we call non discretionary, whereas discretionary things can actually be service level adjustments that you've alluded to. That can actually give us some flexibility and those adjustments can either be a reduction or it can either be a increase in the service level. And of course, that then drives the service capacity. So in a very short overview, I think that's where we're at. I think where we'd like to get to is trying to do the earlier and probably give. where we're at. I think where we'd like to get to is trying to do the uh earlier and probably give council more time to be involved in, I guess, some of the categorizations, but but you, I think that's probably a good start.
Okay, thanks. Uh so the completion is by uh May, Mark?
So the budget must be completed by May of each year. Uh this year, I think we finished in, I guess it'd be February, so we were a little bit early, uh but I think that uh that conclusion led to some some of this discussion where there was some need to try to enhance it or make it for a better result.
So uh to open it up then, uh there's the timeline, but also I've added, you know, how does council feel about the duration of the sessions, the frequency? Uh how'd you feel about uh public engagement? So the process, we'll get to the product next, which is around your comment around the core versus variable. Let's handle that next time. So let's uh let's go roundtable, I think it's probably the best, and Margaret's up, so let's start with Margaret. Uh comments then on the process?
Yeah, I have a a question about, other communities seem like they have their budget all done lickety-split by like November. Is there a reason or something that I'm not aware of, of why they are able to do that, or do they just start sooner, or is this the same process um for every community?
So Gord, I'll 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 jump in. Um I think there's two components uh to it. Uh as I mentioned, part of our challenge is uh we are utilizing existing surplus during effectively the next year, uh when it's being uh when it's being needed. Uh so without utilizing that, we'd have a greatly reduced um uh budget surplus. Um that's, sorry, a greatly reduced capital program because it depends on the budget surplus. How you can cope with that is you can simply have enough cash flow so that you can actually just put that in the bank and our, our, you know, I've taken other money to to bridge you through that through many years. We've come to this process though because we're trying to be highly efficient with the surpluses. That's number one. And number two, uh part of it, I think, is the depth. Uh what you see uh in some communities is that they would proportionally spend less time on the budget, that's not a good thing or a bad thing, but their process is usually um something that would take less time. Even with our process now, uh as we've been trying to make it more streamlined, we do spend a lot of hours in the budget, but that can be a good thing, I'm not being critical of it. I'm simply saying that's one of the differences that one actually sees. Um that's led us to such things as Gord mentioned, discretionary and non-discretionary, and trying to to focus our efforts on where we can uh make the most impact. The ideal situation is is for the uh has been referenced actually in some of some of the comments is to be able to deal with the budget almost at a policy level as opposed to a dollar level, so we can understand or make sure we're progressing down certain paths such as uh infrastructure paving is always a classic example. That may be the priority over, say, infrastructure beautification of the boulevards or something like that. That's where the the stuff is most helpful. Uh but of course, council can always uh go down and do any level or or section they feel is gonna be helpful that needs clarification or some assistance.
So just uh generally uh back to Margaret, uh across the country, uh three things happen relative to timing. One, uh and we always have to differentiate capital from operating. Many want to have their uh capital budget done by November or December. Why? So they get good bids, uh tenured, right? So that, uh and so often you have to sort of clarify, was it the capital budget that was approved, or was it the operating, right? But that's why, in particular right now, uh people are finding, you know, it's very competitive, et cetera. So so capital-wise, they they wanna get out of the hopper ahead of everybody else for roadworks, et cetera. The second that can be um uh not conveyed that clearly is many will have an interim budget, subject to modification uh all the way to April. Uh the reason for that is to give staff certainty that not everything is in limbo um for, you know, for January, February, March, April. So again, it could be the, you know, how that stated. Uh so often, most um most local governments will attempt to have an interim budget, subject to uh final ratification, so. And then others, uh like uh Mark said, uh the budget is so straightforward um that there's not a lot of flexibility and it gets approved, so hopefully that helps. Uh so I'm pro, uh thanks, Margaret. Uh anything else, Margaret, before I go to Blair?
No, that's great.
Oh, good, good comment. Uh Blair, uh comments on process?
Yeah, thanks. Um yeah, you know, I I think that um some of the comments that I've already made have been helpful, to be honest. Um I have wondered about uh having some process of interim interim budget, as you mentioned, so uh interesting that you've mentioned that, cuz I've wondered what that looks like, uh to have sort of a um some kind of pre-approved interim budget that might have some kind of adjustment as the, in over the last three or four months, or if some uh situation changes dramatically that there's an adjustment, but then we can know we can move forward, cuz the challenge that for me, that it feels to me is that we're talking about a budget and we're we're, you know, we're, it feels late, uh we're getting into March into, you know, probably, I guess, uh February, March, before we really have a clear sense of what the budget looks like. Um I also wonder if if there could be some opportunities a bit earlier on in the year to have small sort of snippets about things coming for the budget as opposed to waiting till we have sort of one bigger finalized document, so um maybe, maybe things like you suggested, maybe having um, you know, the capital budget maybe done earlier. Maybe we could look at capital items in September, October, make a decision on the capital items by November and then move on to operating budget, um you know, from into uh January, February. That might be able to split the budget into two halves, and so those are kind of interesting concepts for me. The earlier we get the information, um I think the better, and um probably in smaller pieces might be better, um even though I know we we always wanna see it in the whole, but maybe if we had an interim budget approved, um so we can see kind of the whole, and then we could have smaller snippets earlier on to um to be able to digest them in more uh in easier ways, so I guess those are some initial thoughts, but uh.
Thoughts?
Thanks.
So uh bite sizes could be something like capital, uh which is quite separate, funding, funding is quite different. Now, even within capital, you can have core and discretionary, okay? Uh then in the operating, you could have core, uh kind of, hey, these are the inflationary costs, et cetera, you know, of our core server. Now that would imply you knew what the core was, to say that, okay? And then would be the discretionary. Uh now typically what happens in an interim budget, uh there are variations on this. You adopt the core, these are the core service delivery, and anything discretionary is put on hold uh often by way of what they call an envelope. So there is an envelope set aside for whatever those uh the wishes of council were, but they're not acted upon until uh final uh ratification. And so that's uh the debate, you can move envelopes around, kind of like your priorities. Uh that was Blair. Uh Bob?
Yeah, I really don't have uh an issue with the with the budgets, the way they're put together. I know that there's always a lot of stress because it's a stressful exercise. Um I see the process in front of me as being appropriate, and I've never really had an issue over the twenty years that uh that I've been doing budgets, but I know that's a concern from other councils. My hope is that we improve the process rather than take some extremes, which is what I'm seeing a little bit of, that some are taking extreme uh or asking for some extreme changes or or actions to be taken. Uh this has been a particularly tough year because of COVID, but I mean, that that excuse seems to apply to almost everything we do or everything the world does, but uh it's always a challenge. It always is a challenge, but I don't think it can be uh a cookie cutter. I don't think it can be necessarily compared to other communities. We have our unique set of challenges. And quite frankly, I trust the staff, and uh when I see the budgets coming forward, uh the and the and that line of discretionary and so forth, um yeah, we make some decisions around that line, and that's what we're here for. Otherwise, I think we should be uh happy that the that staff are putting together all the information for us. It's a whole lot of work. And good grief, it's not easy. We're we're such a growing community, so uh I'm happy to continue the way it is.
Thank you, Bob. Uh David?
And then.
Thank you. I'll go slow because I wanna make sure that my um my thing is working. Okay, I I also don't have a lot wrong with the way it is. But one thing that budgets sometimes, and I know that in municipal, we have to get it down, it's law, and that's the way it's gotta be. But things change. We have to have the flexibility, like once we say, well, that's the budget. Uh we do have things after that that change. Um and sometimes you you have to have the flexibility. Um one thing that I have heard Mark say six times, if he said it once, well, maybe not that many, but we do have issues. I do have issues, like I would like to, and I don't, I don't think that what I would like to do is the right thing, but I would like to go to the different departments and say, what can we do here? But that doesn't work very well because the first thing you're gonna have is now you're gonna have a competitive uh between the heads of all the departments saying, well, we need more. Well, we need more, you know, uh very seldom do you say, well, we need less. Um so somebody has to be in charge, and um and that's why, you know, uh when we set priorities and we do that, it sometimes takes a lot of the ups and downs. Actually, I'm saying, I'm really right now saying not a lot here of meat and potatoes. I actually don't have a problem with the budget the way it is. There's always room for improvement, but we've gotta watch that if when we improve this, we don't make it too hard for council, uh for staff to work with it. And ultimately, somebody's gotta be the boss in the end and say, hey, you know what? No, let's not do it that way, let's do it that way. So I I I don't, I'm not really saying anything, I'm just saying that um I don't have a a lot of issues. There are some real good points in nineteen, no motion, but then uh like I say, it's gotta be fluid. If it it goes up and down, and we can't make it too rich. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh so still on process, uh Kim?
Yeah, well, um I do have a lot of problems with how the process is done now. And I think the crux of the problem that I have is I do not see this process as giving us a council budget, but giving us a staff budget. And um you know, in in my mind, the way the process is working now is the same uh process as with collective agreement. Uh I mean, council ratifies a collective agreement and it becomes council's collective agreement because they've ratified it, but council has had no input to that collective agreement. The collective agreement has been negotiated um by staff of the township and um members of the uh bargaining locals. And they come up with an agreement they both like, and then council's job is to ratify it. That's the same thing we do with the budget, basically. And I think what needs to happen is we need to start at the beginning with a bird's eye view of everything. What's happening now, like what's happening now is basically uh we start the process in uh November, December, and uh the very first session we have is sticker shock. And a good example is this past year, our sticker shock was uh, well, guess what, if we're gonna continue on just providing um what we what we have and then adding on a few extra projects that council wants to have done, you're looking at a nine percent tax increase. And then the rest of the sessions are spent justifying where, why the nine percent increase is important, and then bargaining down bits and pieces by cutting out bits and pieces. Uh time spent on a budget, it we spend a lot of hours on the budget. And staff spend a lot of hours on the budget, but that time spent does not equal quality. It just equals time spent. And uh uh you know, Mr. Backen started off saying that uh we have a uh we have May and June council priorities that are set, and then those have to get figured in. Uh why, why do we have to wait to December thirty-first for a prior year surplus, DCCs and CACs? I mean, surely to goodness, by November, you can make a fairly accurate projection of what uh prior year surplus, DCCs and CACs are going to be. And if it happens that they're over, and in particular, if you're making a conservative assessment, it chances are they will be over, then that's just extra money uh to be spent on other things. So why can't we have estimates of those account balances uh by November? Actually, I think we should be um be able to do that, I would think, by September, because there's only a quarter left. So the the idea of having um bite sizes, I think is where we get into problem, because when we're only looking at bite sizes, we're we're not seeing the bird's eye view. We're not seeing the thousand-foot picture. And then we end up, when we've done the bite sizes and we've all agreed on the bite sizes, then when we get to the sticker shock, we're we're, we end up with fighting over what we're gonna cut out. So for twenty years, whenever I wanted to do something, I've been told, okay, what are you gonna cut out of the budget in order to do that? Well, no, that's not my job. My job is to say, this is what the overall start point should be and stick within that. And that never happens for us, it never happens. So I think that um uh some of the notices of motion I put forward, like C nine, C ten, uh some of the other ones fit in to this whole process thing. So no, I'm not happy with the process. I don't think it's the right process. I think what we're ending up with a col, is a collective bargaining process and not a budget process. So that's my summary. Thank you.
Great, and uh and we'll dive into that more when, you know, in the product, et cetera, we get a little more early direction. Thanks, Kim.
Well, Gord, I, you know, and and I'll give you an example here, if I may.
Yeah.
We just got in uh uh last Thursday, uh a report on the Act of Beyond the Bell program. And I was quite surprised to see that um, you know, the program's been in place since twenty eleven, between twenty twelve and twenty nineteen, our fees for the program only went from ten dollars a day to eleven point two five dollars a day. Well, our staff costs, which is the main costs in this program, did not go up by a dollar twenty-five a day. I'm sorry, it didn't. Why aren't our program costs going up? So council may have made a policy decision back in twenty eleven that resulted in a program, but there was no review of council by that program since twenty eleven. And the costs have gone up, and we're now in a position where we're subsidizing this program to the tune of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So one example, and I'm sure there's others out there, I just haven't dug into them yet. Thank you.
Uh yeah, so just uh just so we don't lose it, Kim, I I highlighted in uh two slides from now, user fees, so we can uh come back to that for sure. Thank you. Um uh Eric? On process?
Yeah, I'm not, so we're gonna, we're gonna do roundtable on each of these bullet points, or I'm not really.
Yeah, that's the idea. I wanna make sure everybody has uh equal time. If you don't have anything to say, that's fine, but just.
Cuz I think it might have been better to talk about assumptions and principles prior to process. I mean, I process is kind of a result of principles and assumption and areas of interest like that. So I mean, I made a lot of my comments about process are are not sure, you know, if they're they're probably appropriate, cuz I don't wanna repeat myself later on, but you know, I think you saw it right away where, you know, anything that's proposed to change something is characterized as extreme or somehow not supportive of the staff. I mean, that's pretty much immediately how any changes to anything are characterized. And I think that leads to some of my frustration in the budget process, that it's it's very challenging to get changes of almost anything. Um and you know, we don't really do strategic planning here, we we make to-do lists. Um and so I think the budget becomes a pretty lost opportunity every year. You know, we're not really looking at the budget. From what I've seen, uh we don't really look at the operating budget much at all as a council, um and that's where most of the cost is. Um there's a lot of discretionary budgets because I think staff need that flexibility with the council that we have currently. Um and it's. And it's frustrating, because every year that we don't really do much changes to the budget or really dig into the budget. And anytime we do so, we're labeled extreme, we're not supportive of staff. You know, it kind of demotivates people to try to make change and frustration levels increase. You know, this year I didn't really do much work on the budget because of COVID and other other reasons, and prior years have done more work. And, you know, it's, it's, it seems that we get a high number like Council Richter mentioned. And then every year we just magically end up at the same place. And so I can spend a lot of work and end up in the same place, or I can do no work and end up at the same place. So I think right now the this, the budget is a significantly lost opportunity. It is essentially driven by the bureaucracy, and any attempts to change that are essentially ridiculed.
Thanks. Thanks, Eric. Katrina.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Before I do that, so I will move principles and assumptions next and leave product. So thanks for that, Eric. Katrina, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you. Yeah, it it's good to have an opportunity to speak to some of the issues that I know don't come up when we are in the process of developing a budget. And so some of these issues, I think, have been chronic for some time. I'm gonna put it in that category. For example, this this sense, not from all council, but from some counselors, including myself. When is it if we're looking at engagement? So it says it talks about public engagement. Well, that's part of our regulatory process. But what about the engagement with council that we have that's totally pre-budget to find out what it is that we wish to be achieving? And through the degree that I think is problematic, just to deliver a budget that's more or less whole, then we have to look at it and, you know, re-engineer it after the fact. So I think that's a challenge, and I just want to point out from my point of view. I think some of these issues are problematic, because there are, and rightly so, because there's a lot of diversity on council. There are philosophical differences in the way that people look at expenditures and where we're gonna spend money. And so if our model has now grown beyond potholes and infrastructure, I think what we really need to do is to have a very strong policy sense of what is and what is not in our jurisdiction. So, for example, you know, is this downloading really the issue? Is this part of the problem that we need to address? And so for me, that's very important, because if I'm considering, broadly speaking, what I think is equitable across the community, and all people are paying into a pot of money for the purpose of achieving some kind of service, then I'm challenged by the fact that unless we look, for example, like many are, with an equity lens, what are we doing in the township that's going to have an unequal effect over certain individuals as opposed to others? So, you know, fundamental, I think that philosophical differences are quite important, but one that we we never get a chance to really delve into. So that's point number one. The second one is, and I I like the idea of the interim budget. I'm certainly no expert on this, but the sound of it sounds interesting. I just wanted to use a term that I've recently come in contact with, and it really is fairly simplistic. It's just this iterative process. So the iterative process would be that you make a plan, and then going forward, you have the knowledge that you do have the flexibility to change it. So I would just characterize this as being like some of the local area services that we have, where there's a pre-identified amount of money that's gonna be spent on it, but a contingency. So we know we're going forward. It's just a matter of, could it be, you know, ten percent more or less of this actual number? And I'm wondering if that could kind of work with that interim budget, where we know we have the requisite amount of money. Because I guess I'm a little bit concerned about the fact. There is some finality about our budget that I appreciate, but if we're going to be debating all of our budget items three hundred and sixty-five days a year, I'm not sure that's gonna leave us enough time to deal with this myriad of other things that we hope to accomplish. And finally, my third point, and it's not really addressing exactly what you have on your limited list. But my problem with the current budget process is that each division comes up with what they need, rationally speaking from their point of view, and they they put that forward as this is their requirement. But I don't see a complimentary assessment over. If we are concerned about what our property tax increase is, what are we doing exactly on the other side of the equation to consider? How is our economic model advancing to meet the need? So instead of saying, yeah, we can't just keep raising the taxes, which I agree with, but the other side to me is completely rational. Well, what are we doing in order to generate more income? Is there some, you know, really proactive thing that we need to consider? A counselor, Richter Kim, had noted earlier before about these light industrial lands. What, you know, what is it that we're going to do to try and match up what the need is with what actually, you know, is resulting? Because unfortunately, I think the more we grow, the more of a deficit we create for ourselves. And so I guess I ask myself, then is the remedy to that, to keep just adjusting the budget and lowering it down? Or is part of the remedy, at least, looking at how we can be more economically sustainable through, you know, the model that we have and whatever resources we have that go towards that? So those are just some of my comments about that. Thank you.
Yeah, great. I'm just making note of some that will come up. So I'm gonna put that economic model. I just, I wrote it down just to keep it. And so we, let's locate that in the right place, you know, the bigger picture. Thanks, Steve.
Well, certainly an awful lot has been said. I mean, we can make as many changes as this council wishes. That's, that's a given. We're in that business of policy directing and directing our staff and accordingly. Whether we want to start with a capital prior to operational and extent, those are, can be challenges from, I guess, a directional point of view. Those are all things that can be done. You know, there is, there is some debate whether it's a staff budget or a council budget. I've always believed, the number of years I've been on council, it's been a council budget. And the things we put forward are important, and whether it's expenditures, contingencies, or other things, are how we mandate, how we go forward in the future. Now, the budget is an important document that we deal with. And we do need to spend time, energy, and effort, and also understand it moving forward. That means asking questions of our finance department, senior staff, and and all departments, engineering, park, rec, road, whatever it takes to get the right information. I agree with what's been said. It can be frustrating sometimes getting our initiatives forward, but it's still important. You know, I'll use one example, then I'll sign off, because a lot's been said. You know, the Langley Event Center was a huge project in this community. And we were able to get money, and I think a couple of, a couple of my colleagues were on the council when that happened. We were able to get money from Victoria, move forward, but we had to make some steps and budget and mandate for extra expenditures, so we built the building that we have now. And those are decisions that have serious decisions that had to be made. So it's up to the council to decide how they want to move forward. And I understand there's a lot of differences on this council, but we have to move forward as a group. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to Jack first, Bob, just to complete our round. Jack?
Thank you. So on the budget process, I know it's, you know, I'm thinking about about all this as I'm listening to everyone. And I think about my own experience. Certainly, you have nine members of council, and each one with a different level of, I don't know if it's the right word, understanding, but experience, that should be, that should be the word, experience dealing with municipal budgets. I can recall my first budget, just got elected in November, and then you're instantly into a budget. And I think everybody can probably remember their first budget and municipal budget process and how and how it differs from industry and, you know, what, kind of what I was used to and and where the similarities are. And so I certainly think that for staff to come to council, I think they have to come at a at a point where, and I've always appreciated how how our directors of finance have gone through a process of of bringing us along together on what, what's in the budget, capital and and operating, and taking the time to explain and writing down the questions that council asked, and we come back. If they didn't have the answer that day, they come back with a more fulsome answer. And so there is certainly, in dealing with municipal councils all over, a varying degree of experience on on those councils. And so the, so there's a, there's a process that has, I think, I think is important that takes place, and that's bringing council along. When it comes to the staff role, and we hire as council, the C C O, and his role is to is to ensure that all the divisions are reporting what they need and putting it together, working, and they work, I know, work very hard with finance to bring council some sense of what the needs are. It's, and 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 I know it's challenging. I've talked to, talked to Mark quite a bit before budgets come through and where it's at. And so then there's a desire, I want to have for council to have more say. So they bring in a budget that has a bit of a bigger number, knowing that it's gonna come down and allowing council to have those discussions. Or it's very easy if we said, you know, I'm sure we said bring four percent, but then council's gonna say, well, there's some items that have been taken out that I I want. So staff are challenged in 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 how to bring the perfect number to council. And so there always has to be a starting point. So the the process to date, and I've gone through, you know, I've done, what, I don't know, ten, I guess, budgets. And and I've always appreciated, and I think it's improved along the way, how how we've been presented with this. So that part, I always think there can always be changes for good. And certainly, I think our staff take into account how the process went the year before, when they set up the new process. And it's up to us to let them know what we like and what we don't like, I think, as as we go through it. And I I've I've seen improvements along the way. We may not always get what we want out of it, but it it's, you know, it's important that staff have a starting point and try and interpret what each member of council wants. And there's nine members of council, each with a different, you know, understanding, and each with a different, you know, viewpoint on it. And somehow they're bringing it all together. So at the end of the day, we can have a budget to move forward with the business of the township. So certainly, I think, hopeful out of this exercise today, and I'm sure this isn't gonna be the only one. And it's always an ongoing thing. We come up with some ideas on how to improve the process. But I think there's certain things that are important, and that we do always have to bring everyone along. And can't expect that everyone's gonna be the same level of understanding based on their experience. I don't know if I helped at all, but it's my thoughts.
Just to recap, and then I see a hand with Bob. So the basic gist I'm hearing before we go to principles, assumptions, and product, which is more meaty, is earlier council input slash direction. I mean, that that's pretty clear. Otherwise, what's happening across the country, particularly after elections, is there can be a perception, the tail's wagging the dog, number one. And council and staff are often guessing what's on the mind of council. So you don't offend anybody, you provide everything, and so you end up with a budget looks like that. So very clear, which when we go to principles and assumptions and product, we can begin that journey, in fact, today, what some of those bigger picture items might be. Bob, I see your hand up before I move to principles.
Yeah, well, you've addressed it slightly there, Gordon, but I'd like, I thought maybe you could comment a bit more about this concept of it's council budget, or it's a staff budget, or it's Joe's budget, or Mary's budget. I mean, I see it as a totally collaborative exercise, and don't forget the citizens and the services and our and our towns and our communities that we're trying to build. But, you know, should we not maybe consider getting off of this concept of it's our budget or their budget or whose budget it is? Can we find a way to define more, more of a cohesive view of it and and more inclusive?
Yeah, well, the simple answer is it's a township budget, right? On behalf of township. And so what I think, when I hear those kind of words, and it doesn't really matter, you know, whether it's strategy, whether it's a policy, or whether it's a budget. The key is, just generally, there are three parts to any project or process. One, are the assumptions or direction of council reasonably clear before you do something? So an example would be that, you know, the the social one we were talking earlier. If staff were to come back with anything on that social, I forget what the full words were, they'd be guessing, right? So there are three steps. One, is it clear, and we're seeing this all across the country, that council needs to be clear, what are the assumptions, what are the principles? And I appreciate what Eric said, you know, that well, to do that, you're absolutely right, so we'll get to there. Then there's a point where we have to check in with each other. That's the collaborative part that really Bob's talking about. Then we go back and forth, and we kind of, and that's the collaboration part. And then there is, of course, the endpoint when council finally ratifies. So often when I hear some sense of frustration, it's the, it's the process that maybe can be enhanced, which we'll now talk about. And that council doesn't feel like it necessarily provided that, got an opportunity to provide that direction. But I gotta tell you, more often than not, I'm also hearing from staff, we didn't get the direction, so we're guessing. They just said, cut the budget, be more efficient. And so it's a guessing game. So let's call it a township budget, and let's begin the journey to talk about some overarching principles. Hopefully, this is working. I, I think this is so important that I do want to make sure everybody, not just some people, have an opportunity to speak. So I am gonna continue until I hear otherwise roundtable. Just make sure everybody gets an opportunity to be heard. On principles, what are some principles? Principles and assumptions are similar, but a little bit different. One, new programs. What's our principle around a staff-initiated program or a council initiate? And when I say that, just an idea, right? What's our, how do we want to play with those? New staff. Now, there's two types of staff. One is staff related to growth. So in some communities, for example, fast-moving communities, Calgary, Fort McMurray during the oil days, et cetera, they had a ratio that if if population grew by so much, they would, there was a formula that they calculated, that that was just, you you need more street sweepers, you need more public works people, you need, et cetera. So that's related to growth. But there's also new service-related staff. And so what are some thoughts around that? User fees. Is there some principles around user fees? And that's the difference between a private good and a public good, and more often not, what's called the mixed good. So regardless, where are our services on that continuum? Is it a private good? Should be a hundred percent plus. Is it a mixed good, any variation? Or is it a public good? There is no cost recovery. And if there is, should it be reviewed every year linked to inflation? Taxation is another principle, of course. We've talked in the past that we would see scenarios, i.e., it could be a negative scenario, a zero scenario, or a plus scenario. So rather than seeing one budget, one amount, of which case you need to deconstruct it, perhaps options, here's different scenarios. And I added in here, because it has been a topic that we've talked, brought up many times, around debt management, either new, retiring, so I made sure that was in here. Again, just a starting list. I'm gonna reverse the order, start with Steve. Are there any important principles to you that we should be communicating to staff and begin the budget journey? And gonna reverse the order. Steve?
Well, yeah, the only thing is, the only thing, the only thing is that we stay on track. We work with them. If we have a question, we let them know. And we be efficient and fair with their doc, not trying to change what's been put in front of us unless we've gone a direct, exact direction. And that's pretty well, that's just work with staff, because we're, we're all in this together. Thank you.
Katrina, any principles that we should be mindful of as we prepare the budget?
Okay, well, just to target the one that's highlighted, because I think it's very important, the user fees. So if there's So if there's instances which we've initiated programs historically that are not, um, what we would, uh, consider to be, uh, fair and, um, and budget, uh, you know, not too budget heavy in terms of what it is. I think we should, uh, look more at, I know we, we look around to see what other communities are charging, but maybe that's not the standard exactly that we need to use because we are different than some because of our population and other reasons. So I think maybe user fees should be, uh, looked at. Uh, you know, the scope of it could be the entirety of our user fee program. Um, you know, you could break it up, I guess, into different areas, but maybe for all of our user fees. I know we regularly see what they are, but I think in looking at it like a snapshot, it's maybe better to look at it from, um, a longitudinal point of view and say, you know, 20 years ago, it was, you know, $10, but now we're only charging $11 and, you know, what, who's paying the gap? So I think that's a really, uh, critical one. And I personally couldn't say enough about debt management. We've talked about it for quite a while and I really would like to see a framework or process in place that helps us to understand every time we're looking at the budget, what are the implications? What's the timeline in which we could pay this off? What are opportunities that we have to get lower cost funding? And then do a quicker turnover so that we can acquire what we need, but at the same time be, you know, fiscally prudent. Cause if there's one thing that I've heard that's happened over the course of COVID, the communities that fared best financially were ones that had very substantial financial reserves. And I'm not saying everybody could, but I'm, I'm concerned about, uh, the nature of our reserve system and the, and the fact that we need to have some very strong understanding of what our fiscal basis is going forward prior to the budget being even addressed on an annual basis. Thank you.
So just so I make sure I pick up those. So we have, uh, user fee, uh, kind of the rationale, if there's a rationale costing consequences. I put consequences. And then debt, uh, I think it was the, uh, pay down and, and utility of, and then reserves, just knowing the status very clearly. Fiscal health, right? Okay.
Yes, sustainability.
Great. I'll add that. Um, uh, Eric?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't think I have much to add on this. My way to the end. I mean, I, I hate sort of being the broken record here, but this is why I appreciated the notice of motion. Well, you know, maybe 19 is a lot and, you know, so we want to criticize those. At least we would be debating something specific and substantial. I feel like we're, I don't even know what we're talking about or debating at this point. And that's going to actually impact the budget process as we experience it here in the council.
Thank you. Um, Kim?
Yeah, um, I think there's a lot of principles that we need to start with. And, uh, I, I mean, basically you can go down my list of notices of motion and every single one of them is a principle. Uh, but, um, we talked about the process starting in June with council priorities. Uh, maybe what we should be doing is starting in July with council priorities and setting a property tax increase. Now I have suggested, and we'll probably get to that under assumptions, that the cost of living plus one percent is where we start for each budget. And from there, uh, what should happen is staff should go back to their departments and say, okay, we're looking at a two percent this year or a one percent or a three percent. But that's all we're looking at. We're not looking at a nine percent. I think too that the projects, um, need to be, um, reviewed each year, uh, to make sure that the projects are still valid. Like how many projects are on the list right now? That came from previous councils and their priorities? And should they still be on the list? Uh, we need to look at debt management. I absolutely agree with councillor, uh, Arneson on that one. And, um, I, I also think that we should have a plan when we take on new debt. As this council has done, we've taken on significant amount of new debt, that we have a plan and a principle to get out of that debt within five to 10 years. Uh, looking down at, um, some of the other ones, uh, around, uh, prior year surplus. Why should prior year surplus automatically go to, uh, capital projects? Why shouldn't council be making that decision? Um, carry forwards, the same thing. Uh, the things that we're carrying forward, shouldn't they be reviewed? And decided on as to, okay, if we didn't get them done, are they still needed? Or can we let that one go and reallocate the monies? Um, I think that a principle that should come into play in every budget is that we have a detailed departmental review of at least two departments or two, the, like the major sectors in the organization. So engineering and, uh, parks and recreation and corporate admin. So that by the time, uh, a four-year term council is done, they've included in each of those budget years, um, a departmental review so that the entire organization has been reviewed in detail at least once over that term. Uh, we have, um, some, um, societies. I think we need to be more transparent about those societies. Like the Bedford House Rehabilitation, the Langley Facility, the Langley Parks and Rec, the 10 Feet Sports and Entertainment. These should all be reported out separately to council, not amalgamated into an overall budget. Uh, the principle of public consultation. Uh, I don't think we do effective public consultation on the budget. And I think the public consultation we get back is minimal and not even, I think, meeting a benchmark. Why aren't we doing surveys of the public before we actually ratify the budget? Um, I'd like to look at assessment averaging. I, I think that's a big topic and it's not one that we can control, but I think we can advocate for it. Uh, mill rate, it's very clear. Uh, the point was made that we grow. I think it was councillor Arneson that said this, we grow and we just keep growing the budgets without ever looking at, uh, what's going to happen in the future or what are the future needs are. Um, this light industrial land is one that's just come up on the radar. But, um, there should be a different mill rate for high density development. Because high density development such as we're seeing going into Willoughby right now and which will go into Brookswood is driving the majority of the costs in the budget and the program needs in the budget. Uh, let's go here. Uh, the growth rate. Uh, we're very proud that we're growing, but it's costing us money. Should we be setting a limit on growth rate for each year? And obviously, uh, we need a, a budget process policy that, uh, reflects the outcomes. So those are the principles that I think need to be included going forward.
Um, I can, uh, just for clarity, uh, that's great. I mean, it's a great list for people to, uh, react to. So just for clarity, Kim, on the project status, were, were those like capital projects or program or study?
I think it's both projects and programs.
Okay.
Uh, and I cited the one of the active beyond the bell. And, uh, us having only put the costs up for a dollar 25 over a seven-year period, when we know our labor costs have gone up way more than a dollar 25 over the last seven years. So, uh, that's a program one. But this business of automatically taking prior year surplus and saying, okay, we're going to put those now towards capital projects. Well, why? Maybe we've got operating programs that need the money more than a capital project needs the money.
Okay. Uh, so I put project program status, is it still needed? Uh, I already got the user fee one. Uh, it, uh, just help me with this society one. Um, is that, uh, it's an amalgam of all those and we just want to differentiate them?
Yeah. Uh, I mean, basically it's, it's there under, uh, C14 in the, in the notices of motion. Uh, so basically township has a number of different nonprofit societies. What are each of these doing? Why don't we review them? And why do they all get bundled together and come to council as a one line in the budget? I don't get that.
Thank you. I think, I think I got them all. Um, thanks, Kim. Uh, David?
Thank you. Um, I just actually have, I think about three. I, I don't, I'm just going to go backwards. Um, rep- a report, uh, reporting individually can complicate it. Uh, but actually I think it's, if it's, if we tear things apart a little bit and report them because big numbers sometimes can, uh, you know, I look at it and say, well, what's in that? Um, I'm just going to go back to principles, new programs. Um, like sometimes if you have, if it, like I have an issue with that because one, what, a couple of years back, I, uh, said, or it might've been even five or six years ago. Uh, life, end of life for a piece of equipment on paper and end of life, uh, for something, like, okay, you buy a, a, a tractor or, um, a machine that cuts grass and it, it's life on paper is done. But boy, uh, you could get a lot more life out of it. There's something, there's consequences for that. We've been doing that for a long time and I think they've got down kind of pat on how long things will, will last. But that's, there's an improvement there. Um, when, and, uh, yeah, okay, another subject is debt management. Uh, I'd like it to be easier to look at because, um, you know, uh, in my experience with debt, it just never goes away. And the township will, well, we, the last year, so we did go into a, we did, uh, by the bigger bullet and we've gotten to. But when it ends at the, uh, before we make a budget, it would be nice to see which, how much debt ended. Like to, for me, it needs to be easier to see how much debt ended and how much debt we're going to take on in the next two or three months at the budget. Um, my internet is unstable. Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay. So, so I guess to clarify, I'd like to be able to see easier how much, okay. I'd like to be able to see easier how much debt were out of that year. What is ending? And then it's easier for us. Because if you're, if there's three million dollars ending, well, it's a lot easier a pill to put three million in front of it. Anyhow, so there's that, uh, that would be better for me. The consequences of new programs, and I guess that goes right down to councillor, uh, Kim's. One of her motions about, um, township vehicles budgets, where the, uh, like that, that can go a long way. That just can't end it, but, uh, and I know she, she's putting it down here for vehicles. But the lifespan of something can, that's something, if you can see the lifespan, you can stretch that out a little bit further. I, I know that we have in the, technology is horrible because technology can be done. And, uh, you know, to me, it's not done, but it is. Uh, anyhow, okay, you know, I'm, I'm getting confusing here to myself even. So there's just those three points that I think that we could, uh, in principle, we could look at a little bit differently. Thank you. Over.
Yeah, the, uh, thanks for that, David. So the equipment, um, you know, um, uh, now more and more places, just to give you a lay of the land. Uh, more, it costs you more, but can we extend the life, um, through some O and M, right? You know, as a farmer, you know this, uh, it can extend the life. Um, and, uh, let's see, I think, uh, Bob, you're next.
Yeah, well, it's terrifying to hear, hear what council's saying, uh, you know. First of all, we're supposed to be talking about overarching principles and it seems like we're dissecting, uh, the budget again. Uh, so that, that really does scare me. I don't think the expertise really exists with the nine of us. We have tens of thousands of residents in the township, so, uh, and, uh, huge staffs. So it is a, uh, one principle, it has to be, in my opinion, a collaborative exercise. So we need to know our demographic. We need to know our staff. We need to know even more importantly, the people that we're serving, our, our residents. And, uh, getting a good handle on that helps me at least guide the, my, the budget decisions that need to be made. Uh, you've got a whole bunch of things here that are not principles, Gord. I don't know if you agree with me or not. But this whole idea of the equipment, uh, in all due respect, you know, that, that's just absolute, well, it's been figured out, okay? I mean, you know, a lease and how long a vehicle lasts, whether you're going to maintain it or keep it or hang on to it or try and get another mile out of it. I mean, I, I, I think those that are looking after that department are likely fidgeting right now because they're doing the most, uh, uh, efficient thing that they can. They're looking at the bottom line. So for council to feel that they should, you know, shouldn't trade a truck in or whatever. That's not for, that, that's not what I believe council is there for. So overarching principles, let's get back to that. Do we know our demographic? Do we know what the needs of our residents? And when we can ascertain what our community needs and what our residents needs and what our staff needs to do a good job, then the budget is what it is. I don't think there's any magic bullet and I see a whole bunch of bullets in this particular list, but, uh, it's a challenge, you know?
Yeah. Uh, Blair?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so lots of good thoughts. I guess my first one, uh, is, uh, around programs and services and those things. Um, I think it'd be nice to have a principle around what we do provide as a community and what we don't provide. And then once we make that decision, which of those items are covered through taxation? And which of those items are covered through user fees or a combination thereof? And, and a principle around that. So we're clear when we initiate new programs or new programs come forward. We understand this is a user fee based program or this is a covered through taxation, uh, based program. Um, another item that, um, I'd like to have a bit more, and it's certainly debt management. I agree with the comments made earlier, uh, by councillor Richter and councillor, uh, Arneson on debt management, for sure. Um, I'm concerned, um, around reserves and I'm not sure if we have clearly laid out our policies around reserves and how we manage our reserves. Um, it, it, um, you know, my experience and I've gone through, I guess, five budget, five or six, um, budgets since, um, being on council. And my concern is that often when we, when we are, um, sort of trying to find ways to get our budget down, um, we seem to look to reserves. It's the place we just naturally go to and, and, uh, so while we in principle, we have principles that we want to give so much money per year to reserves. It's also the first place we go into when we're running in any challenges in our budget. We just reduce the amount we submit to reserves. And yet I, I feel that reserves are really critical and important, um, how we manage our reserves. So I don't know if we need to just understand the policy better or if we need to revise or strengthen or, uh, whatever might be around the concept of reserves, um, as a, as an important, um, area. Um, and then I guess the other one for me is, um, and the last one I'll say now is that, you know, we, there are, there are, um, annually sort of fixed costs that we have every year. Um, and then we have discretionary costs and we have those two categories. And, um, you know, there, there's no way that the council would have the time to go through every budget line item to determine if their budget, if, if it's a fixed or required cost each year from a department. Um, and so I, I think some form of review, and maybe we have some of that, but some element of review. Um, I don't think we can do every department, every term. I think that's, uh, way too much. But some kind of review to, uh, just to assure council that there's been a careful go-through of the department to ensure that we hasn't creeped in growth, uh, when it didn't need to and that sort of thing. Cause then if we had the confidence as a, as a council that the, the committed to budget or the, um, the non-discretionary budgets were solid and that there was no sort of, we'll use the word, uh, uh, too much extra fat, then council could really just focus on discretionary items. But I think there's some debate among council that maybe some of the items that are in the so-called fixed budget area are not necessarily or shouldn't be fixed. And, and I don't know if there's the confidence from council on that. So, uh, some policy around that to ensure the confidence of council so that we can focus on discretionary items.
Thank you. So as we're doing this, I'm, I'm trying to bold if I'm getting it right, sort of the ones and we'll So as we're doing this, I'm, I'm trying to bold if I'm getting it right, sort of the ones and we'll come, come back and do a summary. Um, uh, Margaret.
Yeah, um, there's not really a lot for me to add. I've, you know, experienced just a few budgets in my short life as a councillor, so I'm still, it's, it's a huge, um, thing. I'm still learning lots about it. Um, I think user fees was something that when I did get on council, I was really quite surprised to see how much we subsidize a lot of, of, of our, uh, activities and, and some of the programs. So I, I just think most people in the township value what we offer and that maybe we should have a, another look at that, um, for sure. And the public consultation, um, piece as far as, you know, getting the word out to the public about what our budget, um, you know, includes and how their tax, uh, dollars are, are being used is something that, um, you know, I think we could probably, I, I just don't know how, you know, I know that staff have done as much as, well, I've been up to the township and seen their big boards and, you know, people coming and, and offering suggestions and that sort of thing. Um, so, so there's that. And then I guess there's the, this, you know, maybe a discussion down the road, um, of the, of the levy. And I know that, you know, that's come up, you know, before and nobody really wants to kind of go there. But what I like about it is that it includes, you know, your capital projects and this is, you know, this is what people are, you know, paying for, for this particular year. You got, you know, it's a hundred or two hundred dollars or whatever it is. Um, this is what you're getting for your, your, you know, your money. Where, and then, you know, your operating is, is under, um, you know, the two point nine or one point, whatever. So, um, anyway, that's just for another, um, discussion, I suppose, down the road. So, no, I, I don't really have much more to add. It's a good list.
I just sort of get that clear though, Margaret, uh, the levy, are you, you're talking about, um, a value, like showing people value for money and where the money goes, like?
Right. It, I know that Surrey does that and they can, you know, brag about, oh, we're only having a two point nine percent tax increase. Meanwhile, they're also, you know, have a levy that, you know, they're not really talking about. So, um, but they're, they're, you know, it, it seems to me it's a, it's a clearer picture of maybe of how, um, people's money is being used for the different, um, different things. So, I think it's just a.
Okay. So I just separated public awareness from public consultation. May, maybe two different, okay, great. Um, got Jack and then I see another hand, uh, hand from Kim, so I'll come back. Uh, we'll go around once. Jack?
Thanks. Um, so looking at these principles, um, debt management is interesting. I think we all are keen on that. But I think a principle that we have, uh, council, um, you know, can decide is, I've always talked about how, um, when we build something, let's say it's a road. And who pays for it? Uh, do we pay for it, uh, out of money that we have now? And then it's the people that have, that live here today are paying for that road. Or do we have a balance where some of that is paid for money that we have now, which would be your, your, um, um, excess, you know, resources from previous years or, and then some of its debt so that those people who'll be using it over the next twenty or thirty years are also contributing to it. So it balances out our, our ability to provide the infrastructure in a growing community. So, so that's a principle that may be, um, digging deeper into debt management, you know. Certainly, uh, when we build a new rec center, uh, we borrowed money to build a new rec center, uh, in Alder Grove. And one of our principles was to pay that off with land sales. So those principles, I think we have, but, you know, maybe having them spelled out in more detail and having council come to, you know, an agreement on, on, okay, how much on a new, uh, capital, you know, depending on the type of capital it is, should be placed on debt and how much of it should be played, placed on money that we have in our reserves or that sort of thing. Now, uh, taxation, um, certainly, uh, I think looking at, at that and and the comments are, you know, coming at twelve percent to begin with, but we all know we're gonna get, end up with summer's round four or three or five, um, you know, is, is a big surprise. But, you know, uh, hinging it, I'm not so sure about, and that may be in the next one, assumptions, uh, hinging on cost of living. But certainly there's a municipal price index, I believe, is available. And, and looking at that, uh, cause we, you know, we do experience different costs, uh, than, than, um, you know, your consumer price index, which is based on a bag of groceries and housing and that sort of thing. So I, I think more, more depth than that. Um, new programs, um, and that goes with new staff. Uh, certainly we always want growth to pay for growth and, and tax. So certainly there's, there's ways to collect money through DCC and CAC, not going to, to build some of these things as we get growth. But then there's, uh, when a new neighborhood is built, uh, developer puts in the landscaping, the boulevards, that kind of thing. And after two years, I believe it is, township takes over the maintenance of it. So that increases, increases our cost, which should then come out of the taxation for those properties, uh, that are benefiting from that, that, um, new infrastructure or new, new, uh, greenways, that sort of thing. So, so ensuring that that's the principle of that staying, um, current with the costs that, you know, we're able to, uh, maintain all this new infrastructure that we put in. It's one thing to, to pay for it and build new infrastructure, but we also have to maintain it over the next, you know, how many years of that life of that infrastructure. So, so really having a good understanding of that. And I think that's, you know, relates to new staff too, so. And user fees, uh, I, I think you mentioned it, Gord. Some of it is where do we decide if, if it's something that we want to provide our residents, we know this, there's not gonna be a cost recovery and um, I, I think, uh, swimming pools are one of those things where you don't see too many private swimming pools because, they're just the, the nature of the pools, whereas, um, municipal governments have, have determined that, uh, swimming pool is important for the community, but we, you know, it is subsidized because it's, it's, you know, there's those other, other reasons to have it. Is it for the greater good? Is it for the individual good? And then I think coming to determination of, of, uh, you know, which user fees, um, should be subsidized and there probably are some that, that we do subsidize that should be subsidized and which one shouldn't be subsidized. And I think another principle is, is grants. I mean, one other piece of, uh, um, municipal financing are government grants. We have user fees and, you know, fees and charges, I guess. We have property tax and grants are huge. Uh, and so how does that fit into principles, um, making sure that we're current in all, all the grant opportunities to, for infrastructure and, and for the various things that come out? So, uh, I think these principles are, are certainly good starting point. Uh, we need more depth and unpacking of them and see where council would want to go with those. But perhaps you could add, add, uh, grant, um, you know, grant income, income from other levels of government.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so is this, uh, Kim?
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to follow up on a few points. I'll start with what, uh, Mayor Jack just said. And the idea of paying for, um, infrastructure. I think that the pricing of any of these projects that come to us should include, annual projected maintenance fees for that in, infrastructure so that we can plan. So if we're going to build, say, a new rec center, what is the maintenance fee that's going to be required to maintain that, um, facility over the life of its, over its lifespan? So how much are we gonna have to spend every year? And that should be included in the cost. So I agree with, uh, with the mayor on that one. Um, the item that, uh, councillor Kunst brought up about the levy that Surrey has, um, Surrey has put a parcel tax levy in place on top of its property taxes. So it's like a, a double taxation. This is a principal discussion that, that I, I think council needs to have. I'm not sure that everyone would be in agree, in agreement to a parcel tax levy. Although a parcel tax levy would certainly accommodate the costs of growth. But we need to recognize that everybody would pay the same levy. So whether you had a condo in Murrayville or ten acres in, um, Alder Grove, everybody's gonna pay an extra three hundred dollars a year, uh, for that levy. So that's, that's a principal one. Um, and then I, I thought, going back to what councillor Whitmarsh, um, was discussing, and I agree with him too. I think we almost have to have a principle that says, what are our lega, legisla, legislated obligations? These are the need to haves. These are the ones we must fund. It's a legislated, um, requirement. So fire, police, parks, roads. What is versus what is beyond our jurisdiction? Or the nice to haves? And, um, you know, I've talked about the subsidized daycare. And now interestingly enough, the federal budget has just announced a, a fifty billion dollar package over the next five years that will be split fifty fifty between the federal government and the provincial government. Uh, so that ten dollar a day daycare will be in place by the year twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. Okay, they've made that promise. They need to deliver on that promise. They shouldn't turn around and download it on us to deliver on their promises unless they're gonna subsidize us to do that. So the principle of legislated must have versus beyond our legal jurisdiction, which is nice to have.
Uh, let me, uh, now the, the common, so, uh, it just, uh, help a little bit on that one. Um, so the term often that we use is essential uh, versus discretionary services. And so there is criteria uh, that we can use by the way that we would say this is absolutely essential. And there's criteria there. One, one is legislation, there's others. And then there's discretionary. And so we put these on both sides.
But I think the problem is that too much gets lumped into discretionary, which uh, or the essential is not like, when I think essential services, I think we must have fire, we must have police, we must.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're exactly, um, yeah. So.
But when, when you look at parks, we should have parks. It's within our jurisdiction. But we don't have to have parks. You know, that's discretionary. And then there's like these, this after the bell program, which is basically, um, uh, a form of, uh, childcare, subsidized childcare. So, I mean, there's discretionary and then there's, it, it's almost like we need three categories there, but we should be looking at each of our programs and offerings and projects as to whether they are essential, whether they are legislated but discretionary, or whether they're not legislation, not legislated, but discretionary, discretionary.
But, well, good point. Uh, that's kind of where I was, uh, trying to get to. Uh, so there is actually, uh, is three different terms. So, uh, if you actually used, uh, good criteria, you would find the essential list is actually quite short for local government, okay? So, uh, what happens then is the discretionary, which is not a bad word. We choose to do them because there's a need, number one, and number two, we have the resources, okay? However, uh, some of the discretionary become damn important. And that, these two together, I'm just on the left side there, trying to work with this, become what we call the core. Okay, so that's where I was heading to. So, uh, once you go through that discussion, that is great guidance for staff. Here's what's absolutely essential. Here's what's damn important. That's the core and then everything else is variable or discretionary. Now.
Okay, but Gord, can I just interrupt there for a sec?
Absolutely.
Okay, how do we decide between the important ones? Because what's important to one council may not be important to the next council because of an election that's taken place. But the next council is still locked in to paying for the previous council's decisions.
Well, you see, important cert, these, uh, I'm just gonna change the color so we can see them easier. Uh, these two, uh, can be changed at any time. Uh, important and discretionary can change. Let me give you an example. Economic development, just for argument's sake, just give you a quick example. Unquestionably discretionary, right? All across the country. If you use good criteria, it'd be discretionary. You got twenty-two, uh, percent unemployment like Cape Britain, it's damn important. And so what happens is you, uh, you begin to move it into the core. Now, should economic conditions change, i.e. in Cape Britain, and it becomes five percent, it would have slipped into discretionary. So the short answer, Kim, to, uh, what makes something important is it's political. Right? It's your interpretation, back to Bob's point. It's your interpretation of the community needs and it can slide. It's the essential, uh, that, uh, don't really change now. However, having said that, it doesn't mean essential should not be subject to a review, uh, program status or user fee rationale or debt, if that makes a bit of sense, okay? So it's an exercise and I believe it's entirely, I mean, I just see way too many, um, um, uh, local governments across the country asking staff to do this, uh, work. This is, uh, high level policy work, right? Essential, important and discretionary. Uh, Jack?
Yeah, thanks. Just, you know, sort of bouncing off what Kim was saying. I think it's, and, and what I've been hearing is, you know, certainly, um, you've kind of captured it. What's essential, not essential is, can vary with different, um, members of council. Uh, I think, and then, then there's the thought about, you know, the council last, uh, council, the council before that, making decisions which impact the cost of, impact our budget today because we're still paying for those decisions. So I, I, you know, uh, you can never federate a future council, but I think whenever we make, if we're making any, when it comes to making decisions, I think there has to be a caveat, like things change. It could be like the pandemic changed everything, uh, and nobody foresaw that. Uh, and different councils have different strategic priorities. Uh, collective agreements change. We get, we get whipsawed sometimes in, uh, in the municipal collective agreements or one collective agreement goes, goes, uh, before ours. We anticipate a certain percent increase in wages and we find out that we're, we're under because another municipality went higher, jumped the gun and now we're all being whipsawed into something higher. So there's some things that are, that certainly are, are out of each council's, um, control, but I think, um, we can still set those directions that are desired, but have those kind of caveat in there, you know, council priority, you know, what's a council priority? What's, you know, the collective agreements? What's the emerging conditions, you know, like the pandemic? Those can change instantly, your, your principles. And I think if we go in understanding that and certainly, uh, put in some of these principles, but knowing that that's a caveat, that's on the bottom, we, you know, we can't always count on everything being the way it is today. And councils do change and yet with their decisions, impact future councils, but then there's still legitimate decisions that we have the duty then to carry on or to change if, if we see fit.
Well, what, uh, and I'll go to Kim. So, uh, notice I took principles off. I just called it overarching guidance so we don't get hung up. So the big thing I'm beginning to hear, let's see if you're hearing it, is if council's very clear on the service menu, right? Here's what's essential, damn important, discretionary, that's good guidance. That's council upfront. That can change, that can reasonably be done every year. Uh, with that in mind, then, once we know what the services are, who should pay? And that includes user fees, debt, levies, reserves, uh, property taxes, right? That comes the second part. And then you begin to have a little bit of, uh, process stuff like around public awareness and consultation. But I think if, uh, to me, what I'm hearing is this big part that might be, uh, change our model is this upfront piece of determining, uh, what the heck the core is. Cause once you know the core, notwithstanding that it can be debated, it's the one that's gonna be subject to inflationary costs, uh, et cetera. So let's go to Kim and then, uh, see if we've arrived somewhere before we go to assumptions.
Yeah, and, and what you're saying is making a whole bunch of sense to me provided it's done at the start of the budget process. So, um, there was some reference earlier to council having a priority session in June. I think that priority session should be in July after the income taxes or the property taxes have come in. But I think each council ha, or ea, each council each year has to review that list of what's core, what's damned important. So that staff know and staff aren't the ones that are placed in the position of having to make a political policy decision. And what is, um, essential or what is discretionary and what is like high discretionary and what is low discretionary? And that, that list is given to staff to go back to their departments and put their budgets together for, uh, the next year. I could see if we did something like that, we'd get rid of the nine percent sticker shock that we're hit with every year. That would just eliminate it, or I think it could just eliminate it, which would make me happy because I don't like the sticker shock.
Mm-hmm. Uh, the other, uh, good news, I think, is that, back to Blair's point, that the work that you did two years ago sets you up very nicely for this, cause all the services have been identified. Sets you up very nicely for this, cause all the services have been identified, the service level, uh, service, uh, expectations. So now to apply a lens to it, which, uh, we have. Um, and you know, it's a set of actually, uh, fifteen to twenty criteria that we can use. Uh, but I gotta tell you, once you get to discretionary versus important. That's really where your lens as elected officials come, it's not technical, I mean, there's a bit of technical. But from there, it's, uh, really back to Bob's point, your interpretation of this, uh, community's, uh, interest. And that, by the way, across the country includes, just so you know, it assumes taking on services that have never fallen within the mandate. So you've got communities, for example, uh, that are running medical clinics all across this country now. Why? You don't have a medical clinic, you don't keep people, you don't have a medical, uh, clinic, you don't attract people. And if you don't attract people, you don't have, uh, you don't attract employers or retail. So, but that's an interpretation of Jasper, Bath, you know, different places across the country, right?
And, and every community is different, every community has different needs. But the point I think you're making and that I support. Is that council has to make that call annually and they have to make that call before staff go into their.
That's right.
Budget process.
Otherwise they're guessing, absolutely. Great. Uh, how are we doing, uh, is that, uh, so what I've got then, uh, and again, I can reshape this, but I think it's very clear. Uh, we do the service menu, uh, which is essential, important, which is the core, discretionary, that's gives guidance to. Now you begin to have a budget presented, it's not radical, but it's just gonna change sort of, uh, how you format it. Once councils decided that, then you can begin to look at, uh, you know, who pays for what. Now that is for operating. It's a different thing for capital, right? So for capital, I believe you already have a capital prioritization process, is that fair, Mark?
Yep, sorry, yes, uh, we do have a capital ranking process of critical, uh, needed, et cetera.
Because when we look at capital, I'm just gonna blow, uh, blue, you know, blow, I was gonna say blow it up, but, uh, that could be a Freudian slip there. So the capital, I'm just gonna, is different than operating, a lot of what we've just been talking about really is operating. Uh, sorry, I just gotta, I'm colorblind, I gotta get a different color there, okay? So we've got the capital is gonna lead to our debt, is that fair? Uh, debt discussion, which is also linked to, uh, reserves, I'm just trying to. Uh, I'm just trying to separate operating from capital. Um, grants are mostly related to capital, do you think?
Uh, generally, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, surplus, operating, capital, we're uncertain, right?
Could go either way, usually it's capital because we're short on our capital funds.
Okay. And there could be some projects that are capital, so I'll just take that part. So hopefully you can see, uh, what I'm trying to show is that our capital now has, uh, we need to prioritize the capital. Then figure out who pays, deal with debt, reserves, um, and grants. And the operating will be driven primarily by council determining what's, uh, essential, important and discretionary. And perhaps, uh, because really when you come back to the public awareness, public consultation, those are all process things. Uh, with this though, does come some assumptions. And so I was not bolding economic growth or, um, uh, growth implications. Cause that would be more closely associated with assumptions, if I can try that, okay? So assumptions, assumptions are things, uh, for the best of our minds, we believe this to be the case. One, which everybody's on everybody's radar, which is like you gotta put a big question mark is COVID. You know, it just, uh, is, you know, where are we heading with that and nobody, uh, if you can figure that one out, then you should hire yourself out and you could make a lot of. Uh, alternate revenue doing that. Cost of living, we make some assumptions around the cost of living. We also can make, um, um, uh, some, uh, assumptions around growth factor. I.e. new development that adds to the tax base. Some people will use that in, uh, to fund, uh, new services or new initiatives. Rather than just sucking it up, others will just suck it up. Others, uh, depending on your situation, uh, would wanna see economic modeling around, um. This is in particular around, um, say the pine beetle, uh, situation in Northern B C, uh, people wanted to see, um. Some economic modeling to determine, was it worth, uh, using reserves and debt now? Because in ten years, uh, there'll be a recovery. Uh, so some economic modeling, where do we see, uh, growth patterns, uh, et cetera? So we're now on, we believe for the most part, uh, this to be the case. Uh, as we head into this budget. Um, and then we'll end with, uh, product, uh, you know, what does that product look like? You'll start in the middle and, uh, the middle puts me to David. Any assumptions you think are important as we head into the twenty twenty-two budget?
Well, um, you know, I, assumptions, what's that saying they say about assuming?
Yeah, yeah, true.
You know, I, I can, um. You kinda have to assume some things to move along. You, you know, I, I just, I, sorry, I don't have a lot to put in.
No problem, don't make anything up, that's okay.
Can I, can I pass on this one?
Absolutely, anytime you can, yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody gets a chance. So, I mean, one of the most obvious ones, uh, just to help, is that ev- most councils, most organizations will say, yes. Uh, we assume we'll take a cola, that cost of living, you know, that there will be. And we can, it's not a guess, there's a calculation for that, so that, I'll, I'll, I'll give you that one, David, so that one's yours, okay? Um, uh, let's see, uh, Blair. Any assumptions that would be important?
Well, I guess, um, you know. I, I guess, uh, one assumption would be, um, that I, I don't, I mean, again, I don't think, I, I don't know for sure. I don't think that we're gonna see a return to full, uh, recreational capacity, uh, in twenty twenty-two, at least. Maybe not till, uh, later on, so we'll still probably see a decrease in revenues from that area that what we might have had in, say, two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
So, I think that's a fair, um.
Yeah.
Assumption. Um, on, on the other hand, um. I mean, it's hard again to predict, but I'm gonna assume that, uh, uh, building levels, um. In our community and revenue from building will still be very high, I mean, I don't think we're gonna see a decrease in that. I think there was thoughts that COVID might stop that, but in fact, it seems like we actually might be busier than.
Mm-hmm.
As a result of COVID, so, uh, again, I'm not, uh, seeing the future, but I'm gonna assume that our revenues from. New building is going to be still very strong.
Good work, uh, excellent. And, uh, truly across the country, uh, other than Toronto, Montreal, Ottawa, a couple of big places, Calgary. Um, most communities are seeing, uh, people are leaving the big cities, right? And moving to the peripheral or smaller places. Uh, good one, Blair. Uh, Bob.
So that puts them right on our doorstep, so I think there'll be a huge demand. Uh, so I think we should be as- assuming that, and if it doesn't happen, great, but if we don't prepare ourselves, uh, for coming out of COVID. I think the, the demand for services are going to be there. People are going to wanna get out and about and, uh, we need to do our part, I think, in, in stimulating the economy best we can, so. I expect it's gonna be a very challenging year, but, uh, it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be bigger, bigger and, uh, more expensive, I'm sorry to say. But it'll pay off.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, you know, just when we look at that, if we say there's gonna be strong, uh, building, it could be, well, new revenue, but in the meantime, it's gonna mean. Uh, uh, development management requirements are gonna be high as well, right? Does that make sense? You know, for.
Yeah, uh, yeah, but, but also, uh, services for the citizens are gonna be in higher.
Yeah, yeah, I'll put that as the next.
Because it, there's gonna be fewer people providing them, right?
Uh, absolutely.
So it's more fall on our laps, which is fine.
Thanks, oh, uh, yeah. Um, okay. Uh, sorry, um, Margaret.
Um, so, I think one assumption that I pretty sure we can make is that we're not gonna be getting, uh, is that federal or provincial, um, money that we got last year, so how are we gonna? Sort of top up or meet the same, um. That seven million dollars that we got, so, um, that's, that's one thing I can think of.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, last, if not no, handouts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also as reading in our, I think it was economic development, uh, report. That are, there's a lot of businesses that have not renewed, um, their business licenses, so. Um, I wonder if there's going to be a bit of a, you know, less, uh, less money coming our way from our businesses and how are we gonna be able to. You know, help the ones that are actually, you know, maybe needing a break somehow, so, yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thanks, Margaret, uh, Jack.
Thanks, yeah, interesting. Um, one thing mentioned in the other one was, um, municipal price index, you've got cost of living, but I think we need to have some sort of balance between the two, cause municipalities, especially when we're, we're. We see that metro, um, building a lot of infrastructure and the costs, uh, of construction are increasing at such a high rate. So there's, uh, that, there's a factor there that I think we have to have as a base assumption, that, uh, we are seeing increased costs in infrastructure. Um, the cost of building is, is really going up, so. Yeah, and that's, I call it the municipal price index.
Okay.
If that's there, maybe it's, uh, cost of living slash, cause I think you have to look at both, you know, certainly. Be, uh, aware of, of what our residents are, are facing when they come to pay the taxes, but also be aware of the realities of, of municipalities. Um, balancing their budgets. Um, growth factor, uh, new development, uh, certainly we're seeing that here, um. Uh, I know metro with all the municipalities, they do projections on, on growth and they continually update that, so. I think that's important to always, um, be aware of that and, and certainly letting council know where the projections are now. How we control it, I don't know, uh, that's, uh, actually controlling economic development. So it's tiger by the tail in a way, when, when you see this, this growth that we're having, especially. COVID forced, you know, sending people to the suburbs, buying bigger houses where they, cause they're, they're at home more, just like I'm sitting in my o- office in my house. Right now, people wanting that space, they're looking for, they're coming to Langley to buy a single, single, found homes, it seems that that's really starting to grow. So, those assumptions, I think, what's the growth factor and ha- and letting council know what that is, uh, and then, like you say, the economic modeling forecast. I think derives from all of these factors, so we can, we can get some handle on, on, uh, where we're going municipally. And also for our residents, how do we balance the two? But, thanks.
Right, right, yeah, so we're seeing, uh, uh, and, and I have to say, across the country. That this is also a, um, a different approach on budgeting. To require upfront and economic modeling, uh, I would say over the last five years. It started with some big picture thinking, Fort McMurray, for example. Uh, you know, what would Fort McMurray involve without oil? And, and different places across the country, and now it's become very important to have some economic model and, you know, back to David's point. Uh, some of it's more certain than others, but it is, uh, a bit of a model and I think this is, uh, probably helpful. Um, uh, Steve. Steve? Come back, um, uh, Katrina.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I think I've got the COVID problem solved, so that's one thing, don't worry about that. Okay, I think, I think we are gonna have a recovery, well, I think it'll be slower than we think, and we'll, obviously, we have to get our buildings and operations going as well, so I mean, there'll be those challenges. Uh, you've already mentioned the cost of living, uh, my wife's doing a lot for, helped the economy, so there, there you go, she's spending lots of money. Anyway, the growth factor, I think Langley Township is, uh. Regardless of the, of just real estate in general, people will come here, cause it's a great place to live, it's, uh, close by everything, international border. Uh, close to airports, it's close to, um, parks and recreation, we've got five or six regional parks as well as our own. So we, we, we are really good, livable community and, uh, you know. Yeah, Langley Township is what other people aren't, and I think that's why people come here, so I think the ec- economic recovery that way. And growth is always gonna be good. Um, it's how we ma- manage that and how we, uh, move forward with growth, as we've already mentioned, that's important, that we keep. We keep a lid on that, and that means our planning department, our long range planning, everything else. Um, and the economic model, I mean, that's, that's for the future, who knows what that's gonna look like, but, uh. It's important, again, we keep, uh, a track on what's going on. I think the one thing that we always have to be aware of, we don't want to deviate too much with, uh, other communities, um. If some people are, and you know, or, or, I'll just throw it out, or a five percent increase for us to go to a one percent or something like that in other communities in the future, move ahead and we fall behind. Those are important things to take in the, into consideration. That doesn't mean we say we have to match everybody, but always be aware of what we haven't happened on, especially. And they're not running with that much anymore casinos, but we're a non-casino community. And that's a huge economic, uh, boost for those people that have it, and mind you, they're not running right now, but. Uh, I'll give you a couple of examples, Richmond, Coquitlambe, Burnaby. Today they've received over a hundred million dollars in casino revenues, where we've been next to nothing or nothing. Anyway, those are my points, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, made note of that. Um, and, uh, Katrina.
Yes, uh, thank you. Well, under the assumptions, I'm not sure exactly which direction you think we might go, but I, I'm assuming that we're gonna get even more political pressure. Than we currently have going into twenty twenty-two. And I say that because of the new influx of people that are coming here, which to me exaggerates the challenge that we have. Between, I'll call the urban and the rural divide of individuals that are coming to our community with the expectation. That they are going to be, be provided a, a diverse complement or suite of different things that they can do with respect to. Parks and recreation, arts and culture, all of those things. And effectively, the more we add those in, I think the more challenged we're going to be for those individuals on the other side of the equation. Who come here because they would like to have a larger place, uh, you know, bigger house somewhere in the countryside. And, you know, to provide whatever, um, they require. And I just think that that divide is gonna grow and that's going to exaggerate any kind of political tensions that are already there. Cause I think our demands will always be more and there'll never be less, you know, so that's just our reality. Um, I also think it, interestingly, that this idea about recreation, we're gonna have to. Put on our thinking caps and really be creative as to what we consider to be recreational opportunities beyond what we've historically done, for example. Uh, with COVID, bike lanes, um, different park amenities, people wanna be close to nature, all those kind of things, I think that there could be. I'm gonna call it some kind of transference, where we're looking differently at those and saying, we may have chosen in the past to spend. X amount of dollars here, but now we're deciding for a variety of reasons that we're going to transfer it over here, it's not costing us less, but. We're just doing it in a different way. And my final thought about assumptions, I strongly assume that we are not necessarily going to be receiving a lump sum. From the province like we did to help us to get over the initial COVID year. But I really do think that those communities that are well situated and are planning for it. Are going to get a huge economic boost from the green infrastructure plans that the federal government has for everybody. So, I think that this, for me, is an opportunity to start pre-considering from a budget point of view. What kinds of development do we want, what kind of economy do we want, what zoning do we want? In order to accommodate those changes, cause whether we like it or not, the world is really rapidly changing. And I think our struggle will be to try and keep up with the tsunami of changes. But on the positive note, I do think we're going to be able to avail our. But on the positive note, I do think we're going to be able to avail ourselves of quite a bit of money. But only if we are structurally prepared to receive it in that way. So those are my points.
I just, okay, uh, I'll make a note of that, uh, thanks, uh, Eric. On assumptions.
Yeah, thanks, I mean, I think maybe I'll just take a pass with councillor, like councillor Davis as well, I don't have much to add here. I'm gonna, you know, I'm not sure how much any of this has to do with how decisions are actually made at the council table by the council, so. I'll keep an open mind and keep listening, but I don't see how this is gonna relate to, uh, actually how we have made decisions for almost three years now. And for one more budget to go, I I don't see how this is, any of this is gonna change the process.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, Kim.
Yeah, I think the first assumption that I'd start with is that, um. We would be in a position to have council make political decisions. By, uh, at a meeting in July, uh, with regards to those items that are discretionary. So that, um, the lists and the categorization of different, uh, projects and programs. Into core, um, important and and discretionary are in council's hands. For consideration at that point in time. I agree that there's gonna be a pressure from the taxpayers' perspective on cost of living. Uh, because not all taxpayers are doing okay in this. I also agree that with councillor Whitmarsh, when he said, I don't think we can assume the covid will be over. And I don't think we can, um, the new variants that are coming out are quite concerning to me. And some of the data on those new variants indicate that, uh, uh, the vaccination program, which we saw, which we see is the, the, the great hope. May not end up being quite as effective as we hope, so that will impact. Um, our ability to offer, uh, services, particularly on the recreation side, as councillor Whitmarsh said. Uh, I think we're going to see an increasing demand, um, that's not gonna go away. For, uh, outdoor spaces such as parks, trails and patios. I think that's the compensatory mechanism if we can't get back to indoor programs. And I'm not convinced we're gonna get back to that. Uh, I do believe that there will be a boom in the economy. I'm not quite sure when that's gonna happen, if we'll experience it in twenty twenty-two, or if it's going to come in twenty twenty-three. But, um, I do believe we are going to go into a roaring twenties, uh, period. Um, if covid does get conquered. And, um, I I also believe that one of the assumptions is that metro costs are gonna keep increasing. To us and to our residents, we have to keep that in mind. And finally, um, we've always had, I think, an assumption that what makes Langley a great place to live. Um, is that we provide jobs or we try to provide jobs for every person. Um, that lives here that wants to work and and not just any job, but hopefully good jobs that'll pay mortgage. That comes back to the need for light industrial land, if we want good jobs close to home. We have to be able to provide those, uh, spaces for those good jobs, and I'm not sure. We've given enough, uh, forward thinking to that, so those are, uh, are my, uh, comments. So I really hope though that we'll start this process in twenty twenty-two in July. Uh, with that, um, the lists being done, the categorizations being done and council. Uh, taking the political decision making burden off of staff prior to staff's, uh, budget preparation, thanks.
Thanks, know it's a bit messy, but, uh, I just put, um. Uh, employment lands or light industrial back to our strategic topic list, okay, Kim?
Yep.
We don't, uh, lose that.
Well, we only apparently have one lot left basically in Gloucester.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's not enough for the next twenty years, sorry.
Uh, sorry, and I, and also, uh, just this whole discussion, uh, in fact, somebody, uh. Should have been the facilitator who forecasted that we come back to the topic. It would appear that our service level review is pretty clear as the top item, right? Uh, just by our discussion. Uh, so what we have, sorry, um, I just gotta make sure I get on the right page here, sorry. Uh, so we've got some, uh, again, um, oh, darn, uh, assumption, sorry, there we go. So we have some maybe clear discretion, uh, clear things, one core MCI, we can figure, you know, there's a percentage out there. Um, it was an assumption, uh, that we could identify discretionary services and still they would be an assumption as you head into the budget. Uh, there'll be a metro cost increase, so that's probably, and then the rest is beginning to be, um, some. What we might call societal, uh, implications, right? We're uncertain about the covid recovery, uncertain about the business robustness. Uh, we sense that people are moving to our community with expectations, uh, that's gonna impact the rural atmos, you know, lifestyle. So there's a lot of, uh, I would call the societal discussions that aren't really assumptions. They're just, uh, discussion points, uh, so I think I've got Jack and then Bob.
Mine's real short, um, just, um, wanna remind you that if, once we're done this section, maybe a five minute break would be in order.
You bet, yeah, I have, and my, and we're darn close, I think, uh, Bob?
Yeah, I just wanna ask if if maybe staff can give an input, this whole concept of having some session in July, which I think was originally suggested to be June. Would this not have the potential to slow the process down? Uh, I don't know if if I fully agree with this naval gazing perhaps exercise that council wants to do on discretionary. Uh, in in July, if that's gonna speed up or slow down or confuse the process. So I I wouldn't mind staff's, or or what, you know, somebody's opinion on whether that's something we should be pursuing or not. To me, it might slow it down.
I think I'll, I'll turn it over to Mark, I just make a comment, I think the the discussion today is really high level. And I I I do believe that once this day is over, uh, staff and Gord will report back, and that might be that June or July start. Start getting into a little bit more, uh, of the nuts and bolts of.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, as you know, as you continually hear something going over and over and over again. It's all of a sudden it becomes true, same with this industrial land thing, don't we already have probably the largest, uh, area of industrial lands in the whole valley? So, um, but anyhow.
But I think we do need a a session to to get this down to a lower level, we're pretty high level.
Okay, but but what about this this idea of this Ju- June July session, is that gonna be beneficial?
I'll turn it over to staff for that, Mark.
And just to, before, uh, Mark give you another five seconds, so I, uh, we are doing something that I'm quite pleased with. That we, I'm gonna say, have never done before. And that is that in, uh, seven or eight days or so, staff will be doing a session to follow up on this. Uh, so that we can come back with those clear, does this make sense, et cetera? Generally, we have not followed up with a more in-depth staff or senior management sessions. So, uh, that should really, uh, answer Bob's question more to the point, but with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Oh, thank you, Gord, then that that's quite true, it's because, uh, in large part due to your efforts, we've had this session in April now, we could actually unpack it, I guess is the proper term. Uh, I guess I would say this, I think a session in June or July would be productive, but probably for the reasons opposite of what you anticipate. Why it would be, it's best probably tried to identify through an analogy. I I think there is a bit of disconnect between council and staff, because I think staff have tried at least to keep some of the cost pressures down. And I don't think that's being, uh, communicated well. For example, I draw the analogy to a car going around a racetrack. Most municipalities, uh, and we've heard this from many sources that we punch above our weight class, probably operate at about a sixty-five hundred revenue, uh, re- uh. Uh, revs or RPMs, uh, per minute, per second, uh, with, with the engine having a red light at eight thousand. We tend to operate around seventy-five hundred, we know we're short several areas of staff. Uh, finance is the example, and I'll just use a brief example, finance, we don't have a crew for budget and don't have a crew for audit. We have the same crew, they flip over half the year, there's many great initiatives here, and one of the questions they'll have for Gord after the break is. Uh, where does one get the staff or how can we staff up or what consultants can we use for the economic modeling? Because I know we don't have that capacity, in the last, uh, twenty or so years, we've added maybe one or two positions in finance. And some of those very recently, um, so those are realistic challenges that can be overcome, I think they can be overcome. Because I think that maybe some of the, what we perceive as some of the discretionary services. Maybe aren't as important as we once thought they were, of course, finance is, but there may be other things out there that provide us with some, some revenue, uh, breaks. I say that only with a word of caution, cause they go back to councillor Davis's example of of the tractor, um. I hear often, and as a taxpayer and resident, I too get frustrated by some of the costs that we incur, I wish they were less. But if I sent councillor Davis on on his tractor to to cut the boulevards, he would do a darn fine job. Um, and it would probably be cheaper than we do it, because when we do it, we're contractually obligated and statutorily obligated under W C B. To have two flag persons and to have someone, um, under the collective agreement, driving the tractor. Where it gets really complicated is, as we've referenced, well, if we have older tractors, maybe that will reduce the cost, it might. But remember, if the tractor goes down, it's not councillor Davis waiting, uh, uh, on the side of the road, it's effectively two or three people waiting on the side of the road. So I I say that with, um, some optimism, but with some caution, uh, I think this has actually been a, been a good exercise. Because I think we now have the time to address it, but in some of these processes, you're going to hear about the need to reduce our, our RPMs, if you will. We have to consider some of the consequences, maybe retool in some areas, we've been racing for a long time. And it may be an opportune time to retool, which I think would be actually quite welcome by many staff, so. I guess those are my comments, Gord, in terms of an overview, and here's some of the comments with with some enthusiasm, but some caution.
I think that might have been, uh, it's could be very beneficial, back to Bob's. Uh, with that, um, uh, let's take a break, I'll come back, we'll just, uh, kinda conclude that. That will allow us to, uh, go back with your indulgence to, uh, what is that, uh, fifth now priority? Uh, which I'm just from away, but it seems to be emerging very clearly in my mind, but let's see what you think. Um, is a five minute, ten minute, what do we need? How about?
I think five.
Ten.
Ten.
Okay, so. I'm so sore.
About, uh.
Two thirty-five, that gives us eight minutes.
There you go, it, you're forever the compromise. Uh, I think that was eight minutes, there you go, so we'll see, uh, two thirty-five, see you, everybody.
Giving issues, but it's designed specifically for Zoom, for this sort of a.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, designed for this, it has a, uh, sound cancellation and then also, uh. Designed for this purpose.
Well, definitely a new verb, we've been zoomed, well, I think, uh, it's, uh, tw- uh, you know. Never say I'm not a generous guy, it's, uh, two thirty-six, so there's a extra minute. Well, let's, uh, take a look, uh, at, uh, what we might have left to do. Uh, uh, we've got the, uh, the other element was the product, you know, we begin, uh, begun to really circle quite a bit around that. So I've highlighted some, we could, uh, quick discussion on, this is more about the format. Um, and then, um, I'm thinking areas of interest, well, in fact, if you are going to do. A June or July session, we don't have to do this today, it's gonna come out then. Um, so if I'm close, we could skip by that, and that would bring us back to our priorities, uh, chart. Uh, just to determine, uh, which one of these three, service level review, which sounds like, uh, pre-budget. Inclusion, uh, inclusion framework, which sounds like, uh, there needs to be di- discussion. Uh, only a, uh, preliminary research, and then hornpit housing options, which appears to, uh, uh, be in progress. So we can decide which one kinda goes into this open spot. Um, so, uh, those are the three things, uh, Jack.
Yeah, so thanks, so just to be clear on the format for the rest of the afternoon, and I wanna, there is, um, I just wanted. Maybe this is more for councillor Richter, for Kim to to weigh in on, um, she, um, we have been discussing some, and I know Kim brought up a lot of the. Points that she has raised in the notice of motion, now, one thought, and and I'll leave it to Kim because, um, um, how she wants to handle it. One thought is that we've incorporated that in, staff have that, staff have our discussion, if we can come back with, um, those notice of motion. More of a list of of discussion points, along with what we discussed today and come back, we can have that discussion, like you said, the areas of interest would be, be fleshed out later. And then it'll give us an idea of how the rest of the afternoon will go, so if if, um, Kim is okay with that, that when we get to, um. Other business, that those, that list go with staff, so when they come back, uh, and we can have more discussion on it, so. I just, I'll turn it over to Kim and maybe she can help.
Um, yes, uh, Jack, I think that's a a very fair compromise, um. Maybe we could do a notice of, or do a motion at the end of the meeting under other business, just to refer. The list of notices of motion to staff for their session that they will be doing with, uh, Dr. McIntosh. In the next, what was it, eight days or ten days?
Two weeks or so, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, and and if, I I'm assuming then that staff will be coming back to council. With something out of that meeting, uh, so they could comment on any of the ones that they feel are. Uh, can be or have been included and the ones that really need to be revisited by council or. Ignored by council or eliminated by council, whatever, yeah, I like that idea, Ja- Jack, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, and Mark, maybe Mark, um, so then, yeah, that gives staff something to work with and bring back to the next session. You okay with that too, Mark?
Well, point of order, is that not a council decision or that's?
No, it is, we we would have to make that, some, I'm just doing a discussion, we haven't, there's nothing on the table, I'm just discussing with staff and Kim, so.
Yeah, no, I I'm fine with referring.
Okay.
The list, yeah.
That's fine, so when we get to that, okay, okay, uh, I'll turn it back to you, Gord, then, thanks.
Hey, well, thanks, uh, good clarity, thanks for that, uh, so, uh, now the final, uh, element was, uh. Again, um, uh, you can guide me here if there's much more discussion, so I've tried to highlight during our brief break. Uh, the product, which is the format, uh, cause we've already talked about guidance, assumptions, process. And so I'll just highlight, uh, strategic priorities need to be very clearly delineated. Uh, the services, I put essential, important discretionary, needs to be very clearly within the budget document. Uh, I think we heard very clearly the fiscal impact, short to longer term or even ongoing, uh, any decisions. Uh, staffing impact, so, uh, anything we're gonna do, uh, what would be the work program implications? And there seems to be some sense, uh, the product would need to have, uh, some kind of. At least a first effort of some kind of economic, uh, modeling. So this is the actual format, or in fact, the presentations to, uh, council. Now, in the past, I've been going round table, but I think this one, uh, this point might be a little lighter. So I thought maybe I'd just leave it to open season. Uh, comments on format, uh, content and product, and Kim, is your hand still up or you're on?
Yep, my hand's still up, or I, well, no, I'm on, like I wanted to address.
Go, you bet, okay, you go.
Okay, it seems to me there's been a lot of very substantive discussion so far, uh, around things. I'm not sure it's all caught in this list, for example, the fiscal input or impact, short to longer term or ongoing. Uh, and the need in in pricing, for example, um, like on infrastructure. To include the maintenance costs, the anticipated annual maintenance costs for a, a new, uh, infrastructure program. Uh, is that all captured in this list?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, let me just put on the N, uh, O and M, you know, just so it's clear.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that would be a program as well, I mean, equally so, that would be, uh, you know, the government comes up with a grant, here's a super new grant. Here's a super new grant program. Three years from now, we can anticipate that it's going to end and all of a sudden you're going to be stuck, right? So, uh, so it's not just capital.
Yeah. And, and then what about the whole idea of, um, us taking those discretionary and, and important items, uh, into consideration pre-going into, the, the staff going into, uh, uh, their, uh, budget, um, preparation.
Well, that.
I know we talked about the June-July meeting, but is it in there somewhere?
Uh, yeah, so that would be, I'll put it back in process. I'll just put June, uh, July.
Yeah, I, I think if, the, the only reason I've been bringing up July is I know that there was a big question last year about how many, uh, people would be able to pay their property taxes for twenty twenty-one. I still think that that's a question that, and it may have more of an impact on us in twenty twenty-two. So I think we need to have that information before going into the budget. So that's why I'm saying July, because we'll know
Right.
how much came in by, what is it, July second or July fourth or whatever it is?
Yeah, and while you're on that though, uh, because I had done most of this list before this. But let me put in, we also wanted to see the product, because I'm not repeating everything we said, but there were a projected surpluses, right? And carryover?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, okay. Shortfalls, whatever. Okay. Anybody else on product that would make sure, uh, is there anything like around presentations, any suggestions, any, um, ideas or the actual layout?
I would just like to add in if I might, uh, it might be helpful the first time we go through this in June or July, whenever. Um, if, uh, if it could be a facilitated discussion with you, uh, Dr. McIntosh.
So, hmm, uh, that's the services or the budget?
The, the budget, uh, the pre-budget planning session, yeah.
Okay. Uh, looking for hands, uh, Jack, if you see any.
Put mine up. I'll put mine up then. I think Patrina will be next. Uh, yeah, I, I think this certainly gives, uh, uh, how to bring it forward. I mean, I think the decision we, or discussions that we've had today, uh, gives, uh, staff a lot of input on what we'd like to see. So uh, the presentations, uh, you know, longer-term financial plan, you know, that, I, I, I think that discussion will come to this meeting. So um, I think that's important. So I really can't add to this. I, I think there's, I think our staff have been able to see through what each of these topics are and be able provide something to us. And we can refine it further at the next.
Yeah. Well, that's why I usually leave it till the end. It's co- close to Eric's comment that, uh, you know, once you know the process of principles, assumptions, you, you package this, uh, yeah. Uh, Patrina?
Yeah, thank you. I didn't have anything to add to this actual list, but just, uh, a vote in support of having the facilitated discussion. I think it would be very helpful. Because, uh, I'm not going to call you the architect of this, but as somebody who's, you know, mastering, putting all the elements together and helping the dialogue move forward. I just think it would really be most helpful to, you know, cement this by having your availability to help to encourage that and just get us to the next phase after this part.
Well, you're very kind. Thanks, Patrina. Any other hands? Okay. You're always supposed to pause, never put the, uh, the pen down. Okay. I'm thinking if you are earnest about doing, uh, June or July, let's say July, just for argument's sake, that identifying any targets of interest today would come at that session. Is that fair for everybody? So any revenue options beyond what, uh, service level alternatives, cost containment targets? Uh, that would in fact be the result of our July session. Uh, Kim?
Yeah, I think that, uh, you know, we rely on staff, um, input uh, for the budget on what's happening out there in the bigger picture. I know we rely on your input, uh, Dr. McIntosh, for what's happening in other areas. So it seems to me that areas of interest could best be handled at that July session.
Yeah. Well, once you hit, you know, we'll go back, like it'll be, uh, the, the good news is we already have the inventory. We already have notes of what it includes. You can go through each one, uh, with some criteria. Good debate, good discussion, say, is this essential, uh, or discretionary? Once you've done that, then you can look at the discretionary and say which ones are important. Once we know that, then we can say, okay, well, who should pay? And, uh, you know, and look at, uh, delivery alternatives. So, um, I'm sure I'm thinking now, given where we've got to, uh, this will all be handled in July. Uh, Blair?
Um, yeah, I don't know if this is the, uh, right place for it, but I, I, I would like us to in July to be able to have a really, uh, solid discussion around the concept of levies. Uh, what that looks like, particularly, um, you know, I don't see us using lots of levies, but in particular areas that would be, could be seen, and again, that's, everyone on council have a different view, but could be seen as more universal. So two that just come to mind, and of course, I don't want to necessarily debate them today, because it's to debate them in July, but you know, whether, uh, we might have levies for something like roads, which is pretty much universal. Everyone drives on our roads. Um, and maybe another one could possibly be climate action, since everyone is living in our climate. So um, that might be seen as a bit more universal. Um, so again, lots of debate to still come, but I would like to be able to have that good, solid discussion, uh, uh, outline from staff and what that means, what it looks like, and we can really debate it. Because if we're going to introduce the concept of levies, if that even was the plan, it would be nice to know by, say, September that we're going to start moving that way as opposed to wait until January, and we've got three weeks to decide. So, uh, that would be really helpful.
Right. I've added, uh, alternative revenue, right? So that we could, so not only, um, you know, increasing user fees or whatever, but then we can look at alternatives. And, and again, across the country, I'm intrigued by, um, you know, people coming up with new alternative revenues. And I can bring a couple of those, uh, well, should I be able to help you? I can bring, uh, some of those new techniques that are being used across the country. So I think we're agreed that that'll happen then. Okay. So I'm now moving to, um, the last piece. Uh, if I've got it right, which is, uh, looking at our priorities. One, I think the first task is what goes into the fifth spot. And as time permits and your indulgence, then we can talk about any topic you want. Uh, but at this point, it would appear, I'm just going to play this out, uh, would appear that the service level review is going to move up into the fifth spot, uh, and with a target date of July. How am I doing?
Yep.
Okay. And staff will come back with a game plan for that in, um, oops, sorry. Uh, you can tell, hopefully this is not working too bad. Um, um, okay, so that would be, uh, July. Now, um, in fairness, we have not done the budget guidance yet. Okay, we had a good discussion, but that would come back to you in April. And by April, once you've agreed, you could probably take it off. But I, I don't think it's done yet. Is that fair for everybody?
Uh, I think you want, you mean, it, not April, this is April.
Yeah, but all we've done today is have the workshop. Are you happy that, you know, we're now going to incorporate that? Would you take that off? Or do you?
No, because I think it needs to be finalized, doesn't it? That's what I.
I, I would suggest that.
Yeah, just leave it on.
Yeah.
Just take the April off.
Yeah. And so I'll just put May, uh, it's gonna, you know, I'll work with staff. We'll come back with something. And the reason that's important is you need to adopt it like anything to say, when staff come back and say, here's the budget. Well, it was based on your guidance, right? You know, um, okay. So that would, uh, take that one out. Now, um, what other topic would you like to talk about? Would you, uh, uh, hornpit seems like it's plodding along, Mark. Like, there's not a lot to talk about until it comes back.
That's correct. The next step would be some feedback of the public consultation.
So that, any anticipated timeline for that?
I think likely, I think likely May or June. I'd say that because I'm not quite sure where the, you know.
Yeah. Let's just put June. And again, I'm going to take these dates off. I'm just saying, unless council wants to discuss it right now, it's in progress. Uh, we've got, uh, uh, hopefully Metro coming. We've got the budget guidance occurring in May. And it could easily slot up. So that leaves us with inclusion framework. Um, and do you see that going to a CPC or do you want to talk more about it today?
I have a question for you, uh, Gordon. What are you seeing in other municipalities? I mean, I, I was, I was, it's coming up now in different boards and, uh, on and different organizations I've seen. What are you seeing in that? Because I, I, and, and it's also, I think there's diversity has to be in that word somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, it's, it's, just wanted to get your viewpoint on that.
Yeah.
Where it is in other municipalities across Canada.
Well, it's, um, well, first of all, a couple of things about it just generally. And I think you've already experienced this, is it's a pretty vague concept. Or you can drive an eighteen-wheeler through it. So that's, it's like climate change, right? Or global warming. It's huge. So how are, uh, people attempting, uh, to approach it? Well, one, um, often doing what I would call an orientation session, bringing somebody in who knows something about this, maybe somebody from nearby, from one of the other municipalities who's already done this. Um, and I know, uh, staff have done some research, but often it's good just, just bring somebody else in that's already, uh, been there and done that, so that we know what we're talking about. Because when I hear the conversation and that this is not a negative, uh, we're all thinking different things, right? Is this truth or reconciliation? Is this, uh, being a welcoming community? Is this, uh, anti-bullying? You know, I mean, wow, you could drive it. Uh, is it social media, um, mannerism and all that kind of stuff? The second part then is, uh, once we have a feel for it, is, uh, people are splitting it out uh, as to a corporate framework, which is within the township. And then a community framework, which is about the, a whole community. And so trying to differentiate, now, of course, they're very parallel. And this is not a lot different than climate change. If you recall, we had the corporate strategy and the community strategy. And of course, they need to dovetail. Uh, but many are trying to handle the corporate first. And the reason for that, two reasons. One, uh, you need to show leadership, right? So, uh, hey, we are doing some things. Uh, so that when we go to the community, we can already show that there are some things that we're doing, uh, to show that leadership role. Number one. Number two is, once you say it's community-based, it requires a, uh, community-based process. Otherwise, it's not a community framework. And that takes a little bit of effort and will take a little bit of time. So, uh, so the but definitely, um, uh, I'm going to say two years ago, uh, this was not on the priority radar anywhere in the country, other than truth and reconciliation, which is very specific, right? And so this has shot like a rocket in the last two years. And I think we know the reasons, you know, a variety of reasons. Is that helpful a bit, Jack?
Yeah, yeah, it is. And, and that's why, you know, I wanted to flag it, because I, I think I called it a sleeping giant. I think it may be.
Yeah.
Um, it could be one of those important, um, you know, it's a process you have to, you know, go through, and it probably never ends, but it's a process to go through to come up with that framework for. And I, I agree with you, corporate, um, a lot of corporations are, are embedding, um, policy i- in their, in their corporations. And it's not just municipal. It's, it's going throughout, uh, corporations throughout Canada. And, uh, and taking a look at it, getting it on our radar and say, okay, where do we go from this? And I agree with you. It's, it's a big topic. It, it means different things to different people.
Well, I'm, I'm just working with Halifax right now, for example. That's why I got a helicopter going. I live by the airport. Sorry about that. So I'm working with Halifax right now. Now, they of course, uh, have Afro-American, um, you know, strong roots there. And so that was, that was one of the prompts. Uh, but their first step was to actually get educated so that they could develop some scope. Like have some kind of orientations. That might be, uh, the gentlest first step. Uh, Kim?
Uh, yeah, thanks. I think from what I've seen, and I've been exposed to this through, um, or the trends and the changes that are being made through both, um, Quantlin Polytechnic University as well as Metro. I think what Metro is doing, uh, because it's a, um, you know, a municipal or regional government framework, they have, I think, developed a, a very good set of best practices. And if we follow in anyone's footsteps, we should probably start with the Metro framework. And I believe the, the introductory sessions, Metro has already done that. They ran four different workshops on, um, the impact of diversity and what inclusion means and, uh, you know, what racialization means. They did four of those sessions. I know I attended three of them. Also, like, it's the same session over and over again. I'm pretty sure everybody on this council attended one of the Metro sessions. And if that's the case, then I think what we could do is just move forward uh, to looking at what the outcome has been at Metro and how they've interpreted it for their corporate model. I like the idea of using a corporate framework and then going into a community-based framework. Uh, because we have to be the leaders. That's clearly what Metro is saying as well. And so we're, we're going to be leaders and role models. And then, um, the community, um, will have that kind of a role model available to them. So, yeah, I like splitting it into the two. I like starting with the corporate framework. And I think the corporate framework we should be looking at is Metro's.
Thanks. Uh, Steve? You need to turn your mic on, Steve.
Me now?
Yep, you got.
Okay. So basically, um, uh, I think Metro is a good place to start. I think that, uh, school districts as well, they have, uh, ideas as well. And also perhaps other community, which is good to explore what's out there. Um, in Metro, the committee, some of the committees I sit on indigenous relations and, uh, you know, Metro has an awful lot of water, uh, projects and, uh, watersheds. And they also have the liquid waste projects and, uh, which also took a lot of land bases that, um, are either owned or managed or under the treaty for, uh, the indigenous, um, communities a- and their land. So, I mean, they are reaching out. I think there are maybe over twenty-plus communities that, um, through the, uh, uh, indigenous communities that deal with. So that's one example. Of course, uh, a few others. And as Counselor Richter said, I did attend one of the sessions they had. Um, so I mean, there's a lawful lot, long way to go in that area. And you're right about reconciliation is still out there. And also, this is something the, a corporate framework, it it would be supportive, I think, by this council. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, Eric?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm still not clear on what it is. I've been trying to Google it a bit, trying to learn a bit more about it. I think you're right. It can be a lot of different things to different people. I think this has got, you think you started this off saying, what was the next step for this? And I, I think it's got to go to CPC. I think a lot of other things were put on the table long before this was, that had never been discussed, never been addressed. And there seems to be an effort to move this to the top of the list. I, I think we got to do stuff in, in the first in, first out. Um, I don't know why this would be moved ahead of other items that have been waiting a long time to be debated and heard by council. And I think we got to remember, of course, that this, this came out of, um, an effort to justify voting against the rainbow crosswalk. So I would like to understand it. If it's going to be more than that, um, you know, what that's going to look like and what that's going to be about. And, and what's the cost going to be and what policies are going to be changing? I think there's a lot there that I just don't understand. And, and I'd like to understand what the motivation is. Hopefully, it's more than just, just what it seems. And, and I'd like to understand what the motivation is. Hopefully, it's more than just, just what it seemed to be. And I think that's gotta be clarified, and I think all of that can be clarified at CPC, after other items that have been waiting almost two years. Uh, have a chance to be heard. Thanks.
Thank you. So, I, I think, uh, this hasn't been, uh, unpacked, to my knowledge. So I'm just putting it with, uh, um, these other items, okay? So, if we're close, and then I'll come back, so just, uh, we would have, Horn Pit is kind of sitting to come up, cause it's ready. And inclusionary diversity framework would go to, uh, the CPC list. Of which we can come back, uh, we can go back and, uh, visit. So I've got, uh, I think, uh, Jack and Blair might have had his hand up.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear, it, it's, it's on this list, and your discussion was what should move around, and, um, yeah, I, and also. Understand this takes a lot of discussion. It's not, uh, not about rainbow cross, it's about. What's been happening in the world around us, uh, I'm seeing it all over, and, uh, I've totally forgotten about crosswalks. I was thinking about the bigger picture here, but, um, it does need more, and I agree, we have a, a priority list that has to go through. And I thought we were just discussing what kind of next topics. I'm not saying what order it should go, I'm not pushing it to the top. I just hope that, that didn't come through, I wanna make that clear. You're having a discussion on, things that are on our list, I think are important. Uh, and, uh, but they may not be important to this council, but, uh, I just do see the trend where it's going, and, uh. As Kim, Kim had mentioned, Metro has been pretty active in this field. It's bigger, it's, it could be anything. But something needs to be looked at at some point. Thanks.
So, uh, just to show you how, uh, you know, we can play with this, and then I'll go to Blair. If we come back to, uh, this list, um, then you could, we could look, um. Oh, sorry, I got the wrong one, sorry, sorry, just that, sorry, just, sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, darn. This list. Could simply, uh, add, this one could simply be, uh, like, something like that. So if we agreed that as we plow through these things, we could acknowledge that could be one. That would be brought up for, uh, CPT, CPC discussion, um, ahead of, uh, others. If that was your, uh, your wish. Uh, Blair?
Yeah, I guess, you know, that, it's, uh, it's a very big topic, um, it's a reflection of what is happening around the world. Uh, this has nothing to do with rainbow crosswalks, um. It is an important topic, and I just would like us to discuss it and discuss what we as a council would like to do with it. So it isn't about saying that we even have to have it. It is important that we discuss it, and if this council decides they don't want it, that's fine. But we need to have the discussion, so, uh, it, it's fine to me if it goes to the next CPC and we're able to discuss it, um. You know, I have no problem, I'm just waiting for an opportunity for us to actually have a good conversation. Led by some, uh, research, uh, maybe by our staff that can tell us what's actually happening around us. Um, so I think it's important that we don't put our heads in the sand, that we realize what the world is going, what's going on in the world, and we, we treat this one within some level of importance.
So that could be, uh, the Metro model, right, slash, um, research. Could be the starting point, just for, uh, orientation. Uh, Kim?
Yeah, um, I think we should move it up to, um, C, CPC. And I guess we need a motion to do that, but we could do that like under other business, when we dispose of all the others. Uh, so that, that item is on the list for CPC as a result of a motion of council. And, um, I really think that, uh, we, we do need research, um, we do need to take a look at the Metro model. And as much as I hate to suggest it, because it's taken so long to get Metro here to even talk to us about water. Uh, maybe we need to see if somebody from Metro who's been working, um, spearheading this program can come in. And talk to council about it at that CPC.
Right. And you know, if not, there's other places, um, you know, Calgary, other places that, uh, have done so. Especially now, when you can do it by Zoom, right? So, uh, so easily. So I've taken the yellow highlight off just to show that, uh, if council wishes. Uh, it would add, uh, to the list, uh, by way of a notice of motion, uh, that Jack will handle, uh, shortly. And I'm going to con- end it there, how's that? There's no need to unpack it anymore. Is that good?
No, oh, I think, I think that's, yeah.
Bob?
Okay, I'm very confused. I thought this was already referred by council, and I thought we were waiting for a report. I don't, I don't understand.
Yeah, it's asked out.
Yeah, yeah, let's hear, cause I, I, I thought we had that discussion at a council meeting, referred the staff to come up with that. Some wording that was, uh, being used by other communities, and we were going to then have a, a discussion to adopt it. I didn't think it was in this state.
At that point, do something with it. Mark or Wendy?
Fair enough.
I think we should try Wendy, because as I recall, I thought it was referred, but with no action to be taken, it would be done later date. But Wendy, do you recall?
Uh, yes, I do, actually. It was, uh, referred to the last session with Mr. Makatosh, um, and it was put on the list. Of, um, strategic priorities, but we received no further action beyond that.
Okay, so then at this point, it would be, I suppose then it would be appropriate to have a motion to put it up to CPC.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not saying it has to go to the top of the list, it's just, you know, we don't decide of it then.
Yeah, then you just move it into the queue, right?
That's right.
Okay, if you decide, so right now, I'm not putting anything beside it. Saying that.
Well, why don't we just have the motion now, Mr. Mayor, to move it up to the CPC list?
I believe we could, I think we're, uh, Gord, we're, we're pretty much at that point.
We've, uh, balanced all our, uh, items, there, uh, was only one other topic. Uh, that I thought we could highlight, which we can do very shortly, and we're gonna take five minutes, so, uh, I'm ready when you are, uh, Jack.
Okay, so we'll, uh, so we'll just hold off on the emotions till we get to other business, and we'll just go through these, if that's okay.
Okay.
Hold on to that, Kim.
So I just, uh, 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 just one last, uh, concluding thing that when we did the last session. Uh, we, uh, I was asked, and we had ideas on how to keep sustaining our strategic alignment. One was the request for decision, uh, to make sure that council had adequate information. Uh, I'm gonna work with that with staff on, uh, in two weeks or whatever, just to make sure it answers that question. Uh, remember the one, what impact does this have on the staff work program? What impact does this have on ongoing O and M? So back to, uh, some comments that were made. Um, the request for clarity direction, uh, again, I'll be working with staff on that, that's, uh, that's the ideal. A classic here would be, um, the inclusion, uh, framework, right? Bringing something before staff do a lot of work, uh, just providing some kind of Kohl's Notes version, so you can have a good discussion. Uh, we've also talked about the follow-up action list, which I think you're using now, Mark.
Uh, that's correct.
Yep, CPC, uh, I think you just had a great discussion today. We, we talked about strateg- uh, prioritizing and increasing the schedule. Um, you did talk about, you know, having every once in a while, a department come to, uh, CPC. I put committee at the hall, but it should have been CPC. Uh, management strategic session, a follow-up. Well, good news, we're actually doing one in two weeks, so that's great. Another idea that came, uh, from you was around social activities. Probably we're gonna have to wait until we see, uh, post-COVID. Uh, I think we just did, uh, the budget guidance, hopefully, and, uh, we'll see that, uh, come back, so. Just kind of wrapping up the other stuff. Um, one of the, uh, now, one of the things I, I believe Kim asked was, um, about. You know, so we have our strategic priorities, uh, we have our services. And what happens about the things that come up that you don't need to do, you don't want to do a notice of motion, right? They're not that big. You just wanna ask staff, hey, something. And I think Kim talked about, you know, frequency or like, uh, counselor contact with staff. So just generally across the country, ju- again, just what are some practices? And I thought about that this morning, Kim, uh, your question, and I thought about, again, there's two aspects to it. One is frequency, and one is purpose. Let me deal with purpose first. The purpose, uh, is why are you asking? Is it for information? Or is it to get research done, right? And, so if it's information, that's one thing, I mean, you know, hopefully, it's the kind of thing that's publicly available. Um, and is not a huge implication on a staff work program. Let me come back to that, cause there's a little bit of, um, caveat to that. The second part, though, is if at any time a staff person feels, no, I understand your question. But that's a lot of research, that's gonna take me time, uh, to research and come up with data and prepare a report. Then that should escalate to the CAO, who would then, uh, make a call or ask you to make a notice of motion. So those are the, just, so we all know sort of, uh, the traffic route, and there's no, uh, there's no, um. Um, there's no harm. If a staff person says, you know, that's gonna take me like five hours to do that, or whatever. Uh, then there's no harm in saying, punt it to the CAO. The CAO, who's your political confidant of council, can make a call, and otherwise just say, hey, that should go, uh, that should go up to council. By way of a notice of motion. The second part, though, is frequency. And that is, uh, another factor to consider, is the number of times. So even if you're asking for publicly available information, if that's like, uh, you know, sometimes a week. That volume can increase. I think that's something where your CAO needs to, uh, be in, you know, staff will let them know. And maybe just has a quick, you know, let's not make this more complicated, just say, hey, uh, we're getting too many requests. That are consuming, uh, volume of time, and just give you some, uh, a little bit of feedback. I think the more significant one is when you ask staff, uh, what you think is just for information. That becomes actually a work program request. And if we all have a decorum that it's not offensive. It's, uh, you know, just to s- for staff to say, you know what, that's not in my work program, it's not on this, uh, priorities chart. Let's go talk to Mark, why don't you go talk to Mark, I'll go talk to Mark, and that's just a, a bit of, uh, traffic flow. Anyway, just, uh, some, uh, comments. Uh, the last one, which is being used across the country, and then I'll go to Bob and Kim, is, uh, a project charter. This is a new tool that's being used, um, in many, for big projects. And this is the one that when you get to, say, uh, the inclusionary framework. Or, well, even the public art policy, all those, it's more than just a request for decision. It's actually, uh, the terms of reference or a project charter at the beginning. You know, it's almost exactly like our discussion today. Before you start the budget. Here is, uh, the parameters, and so that way staff aren't guessing. And so, uh, it's a major project, uh, that, uh, and so it's a tool that I was gonna explore with, uh, uh, Mark and crew. On next week, in two weeks. So, I just wanted to make sure we followed up, uh, Jack, on, uh, some of those other items. And, uh, looking forward to working with staff in, I, I forget, uh, towards the end of April on that. Thank you.
Thanks. Kim has her hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to, oh, am I muted?
You're on, you're on.
I'm on, okay. I wanted to, uh, go back to the staff contact guidance, and, um. It seems to me that we do have, uh, protocols for getting, um, priorities in front of council. Or, not priorities, but, uh, decisions in front of council. So as council members. We can, uh, for example, put a notice of motion on, and then, uh, council can, um. Send it to PCC or turn it down, or do something else with it. So there is that mechanism, it's open to all of us at all times. The other mechanism that, um, that I see happening. Is that if there's an issue in the community, somebody from the community will come forward, make a delegation to council. And then council may or may not refer it to staff for a report. Now, I, I think probably some issues that might come out of that is if the request is a large one. We refer it to staff for a report. Staff invests a lot of time in preparing a report that comes back to council on that. And, uh, because it comes back to council, usually with recommendations, council, um, you know, ninety-five percent of the time. Uh, endorses it without stopping to ask the question, okay, now, this is, is this a policy decision? Should we be doing this? Even though staff have looked at it and come back with a report, made recommendations, like, should we be doing this? We, we sometimes miss that step, which I think would save staff a lot of work. And this past week, there's a new mechanism that started to emerge from the community, and, um, uh, council, all of council was sent a letter. Uh, from an, uh, a resident who had a series of things that they wanted council to do. And in that letter, they said that they would be willing to work with any member of council, um, to get this done. So, I mean, what do we do in that situation? Cause that's opening a whole new door of, uh, drain on staff time. So if I said, for example, okay, um, I'm going to take this on, it sounds like a good thing that needs to be done. Uh, I'm gonna call, maybe I'll call the, one of the managers, not necessarily the CAO. And say, okay, I'd like to set up a meeting between, um, this particular resident and myself. And the staff member, um, in order to get an a- a- an action to this. Should we have perhaps a clearing mechanism on that type of request as well? Uh, should we, I, I, I mean, it sounds like perhaps, um, the CAO is kind of the clearing mechanism. So when we get things like that, should we be just automatically referring it to the CAO? And letting the CAO make the call on staff resources?
The, uh, good question, Kim. So I think your history, uh, as, you know, in the township is to be, uh, a little more informal. Right? You know, that's our style. So, uh, a- and I can pr- I could, uh, you know, when I work with staff. We can provide like a one-page little, uh, guidance on this. So, if we have that, uh, a counselor can approach a manager at a certain level, okay, so that's okay. Then you should not have to worry about, uh, traffic control. Uh, that would be up to Mark coaching his staff, that anytime, regardless of the situation, on behalf of constituents, yourself. Some vested interest, doesn't matter, that staff would be the ones who would say, uh, Kim, oh, of course, they wouldn't call you that. They'd say, counselor, um, that's not in my work program, uh, you should go and talk to the CAO, I'll go talk to the CAO. And so that would be the, what I would call the trigger, and you shouldn't have to worry about traffic control whatsoever. And eventually, you'll kind of learn, yeah, you know what, I need a notice of motion of that one, you know, it's just, you know, the, you know. Uh, but sometimes we don't know at the beginning, and now, if we were the city of Toronto, or. I don't know, some other places where we had to have like a tight control. If you had everything going through the CAO, right, because we're uncertain. You would have such, such a high volume of requests, uh, that they would then get paralyzed, so, so that's. So I think, you know, the township's, um, informal enough that you, if we all acknowledge. It's not offensive for a staff person to say, that's not in my work program. Yeah, if we don't have that decorum, what's gonna happen is staff are going to do that work. Uh, and, uh, right? Or we're gonna have some people who are a little more aggressive, or maybe a little. Uh, more gentle and helpful, you know, all that kind of stuff, so, and that's when the games are afoot, right?
Well, uh, uh, and I think the, the bigger issue is that, as I said earlier. If a recommendation comes to council from staff, we very, very rarely turn it down. So if that recommendation is being generated through one member of the community or one member of council. It seems to me that we're circumventing the processes that are there.
Yeah, uh. Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah, I mean, it's very clear, uh, staff work for the C A O. The C A O works for council, therefore, the direction comes from council. However, you know, we wanna be a little more flexible than that. And if it's not a, uh, I mean, the items coming from an individual counselor that would go to a staff person. Should never be a council decision item. That means, that means we've got seven counselors directing staff. And ma- and maybe Mark, maybe. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll work with uh staff, I think we can just a uh one page, uh, you know, and and you know, include that somewhere. So we have something to, a touchstone. Thanks, Kim. So that was uh it for me. There we go.
Well, thanks, Gord.
Yeah, uh, two years ago when we could actually drive it. On the uh, uh, the opening of the uh highway to Tukta Actak.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
So um, just maybe um some next steps and some clarity on, on, um, because we have. C P Cs and budgets, uh, May, June and July meetings, uh, so maybe when we, you know, as council leaves this meeting, they'll have a clear understanding what's coming up. Uh, so maybe Wendy, first of all, I I know there's. I believe it's some work on agenda items and maybe with Gord and you, we can just get a better, better idea of what's coming up, so maybe Wendy could help out.
Uh, agenda items for C P C?
Yes, uh, and so we have, we have a May. Now, is this, um, are these meetings on standalone days or are they prior to council?
Uh, yes, we can definitely, we can definitely put those on standalone days. My hesitancy is, as I understand it now, we've just scheduled a, an additional meeting for July. So at this point, I would schedule a C P C for May and June.
Okay.
And then the budget discussion or with Mr. McIntosh or however that unfolds, I would put in July.
Okay.
Okay.
So may, yeah, so as we have, we've had that little discussion on the priority list, so. Maybe it'll be the election sign and maybe, well, I suppose we can put a couple of items on and and uh. Work our way through them, if we don't finish it, then we.
Yeah, we definitely do that, um, my suggestion would be the election and political sign by law, just so we can get that one done. Well clear of um any of the election, we can kind of complete that one and we don't have to worry about it going into next year, for sure.
Yeah, okay.
And then just take and put a few, well, I'll, I'll lay out, I'll provide the list and then council can choose the ones they want to if they finish the first.
Yeah, so staff would have, would be prepared for that, but we have to have staff capacity to be prepared for.
I would definitely work with staff and figure out which ones are best.
Which ones are best, we can get through that.
Your worship, if we could just defer to Gord for a moment, because he did mention um guidance session versus a uh. Um, a re- a service level review session, which I thought were different. So I just wanna make sure we have the right number of meetings on the right number of sequence, so council can vote upon it, make sure we've got the right, right level here. So I thought there was potentially bu- budget guidance, May, blank in June, potentially um service levels and. Uh, June slash July, or it'd be July in that case, but I'm not clear, I'm not advocating, I just wanna make sure we get clarity.
Okay, so, but with the election sign, when would that come in? I missed that.
Well, yeah. Well, the uh, maybe I can help a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh, so the first thing that I understand would come back would be a C P C schedule and the list. For council to pass by resolution, so there's certainty, right? Uh, so that's number one. Number two is the budget guidance would come back as exactly that, a report. Uh, I don't know whether you'll bring that to C P C or not, but that would be the uh second item. The third item would be a uh service review. I'll call it uh terms of reference, like what's that gonna look like? Uh, and that would be heading into July. So those are the uh three things that come out of this session. But that pretty much, unless you're gonna rehash all the budget guidance. Uh, if I said that right, uh, that would be putting, um, I think it would be putting your election thing in the May session. If not, the second one, which which I recall, I think was the procedure by law.
Okay, so perhaps um we have a meeting in a week, perhaps Wendy and Mark uh can come up with that. Basically, we just got to get it on paper, bring it to council, we can make a decision uh at the meeting, and that way we've had, everyone's had a chance to look at it. And uh, so we have a week to make that decision, rather than making it tonight.
Yeah, and then it's, and it's appropriately by resolution then.
That's right, yeah, so, does that work with you, Wendy?
I can certainly make it work, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Your worship, just to clarify, I think that works, that helps a great deal. We'd be enlisting Gord's help on the budget guides to actually take his interpretations, that we have our interpretations, but he's got a broader skillset. For that to come in that, that report form, that way I think we close the loop on it.
Yeah.
Okay. And then um, the next um item would be uh this discussion uh and and some. Talk on having Gord facilitate the session in July. So I think that maybe we should go to council for a decision, because it's, there's a cost to that, so.
Hey, I'll make a motion that we um ask Dr. McIntosh to come back and facilitate the July session.
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Kuntz, so, any discussion on that? Okay, Eric, or Counselor Woodruff, we'll go formal now, Counselor Woodruff.
Yeah, I know, it's tough, I mean, I, I appreciate the Dr. McIntosh's input and I won't belabor this, but I'm probably gonna vote against this. Because, you know, I, I think it would be better to maybe structure these as C P C meetings, I mean, I think I said earlier. That I, I think it's no one's particular, I don't think, certainly not Dr. McIntosh's fault, but I, you know, I read a few books on strategic municipal strategic planning. And I don't wanna be an expert, because I read a book that usually makes me dangerous. But, you know, what I gleaned from that was that we're not really doing strategic planning here, we're doing, we're making to-do lists. And and I think that's just the, something we would probably try to figure out on our own. You know, I looked at the council policy, which I requested here on this, and. It says here under four point one, you know, set a vision for the township organization. Uh, I don't think we've done that. Set strategic priorities for the township, again, I would more refer that as a to-do list, not strategic priorities. Establish goals and objectives for the township, I don't think we've done that. And set a work plan for the next four years, this was intended to be the first meeting, but setting a work plan for the remaining year and a half. Maybe we have, maybe we haven't, so. I think for whatever reason, these meetings don't really work, I've spent my whole day here, I don't really know what we've accomplished. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against it, but that certainly don't take anything personally, I just don't find them to be particularly useful.
I appreciate those comments, I think it's up to each one of us to have the inputs so that we can make these uh productive. And certainly looking to everyone to provide uh guidance and input to make these productive and all. There are no bad ideas, just, you know, we need to get that out, if there's a better way of doing things, I'm certainly all ears, but I appreciate those comments. So I'll call a question, all those in favor? And opposed?
I'm opposed.
Counselor Woodruff opposed, it carries. Uh, so now I'll turn it over to Counselor Richter uh for the nineteen items she had on the list and.
Yes, I'd like to refer these items to the um, what did the?
To the management.
Staffs, to the management session with Dr. McIntosh. For a report back to staff, or from staff, sorry.
Okay, is there a second or? Counselor Davis?
Second.
Yeah, thank you, and and I appreciate that, I think there's, certainly this isn't direction on any one of them, it's just, um, I think, uh, Mark and. Staff and Gord can review and incorporate, with the discussion that we had today is important. And come back with something that's more fulsome, we can, we can uh discuss, we don't lose these items, so I appreciate that. Uh, Counselor Long?
Yeah, well, as I said several hours ago, I don't uh agree with this uh nineteen notices of motion, I think it's gonna take a lot of. Staff time, the thing I'm the most scared about is that when uh these ideas pop up and get referred. Do staff actually believe that this is where council's heading? Or is it one particular counselor? And so this is, this is my fear, and I don't agree personally, and I, and like Counselor Woodruff has said earlier, let's not take anything personally. Like, apparently happened early on in the meeting. But uh, this is going to give direction of some kind of staff, and I don't know if that's appropriate. So I've looked at them carefully and I don't, uh, I don't agree with any of them, so. Um, I, I don't know where the rest of coun- I'm the only one that spoke up at the beginning of this meeting, I don't know what the rest of council feel about. The council bringing nineteen notices of motion to a meeting. Um, but let's not waste staff's time, we had a great, a great session today, I think staff have got plenty to work on without us giving them nineteen other ideas.
Well, tha- thanks, I just wanna be clear, I think this is just going to staff as input. And it'd be no different than if a list came to this meeting of any member of council, so I look at it as, as a list of, of topics and I know. Um, staff can just provide us with some direction.
Then then I think that, that wording needs to be in the referral, worship, that, because that is, normally if you, if you. Refer a motion to staff, they're going to carry it out.
Okay.
So let's, let's hear that read back, so that we're sure that this is just F Y I, I guess.
Okay, um, Ms. Bar, can you read it back?
Uh, that the notice of motion on the agenda introduced by Counselor Richter be forwarded to the management session with Dr. McIntosh. And the staff report back to council on that conclusion.
Is that?
I think the words for their infor- for information should be included in there, perhaps, I don't know, maybe to get some help.
No, I disagree with that, I put the motion on, it's not for information.
I'll ask Mark, uh, because he's the C A O and he'll be uh leading this, so, Mark, are you clear on kind of the direction that, that council's asking for?
Well, I, I'll explain, I'll explain my interpretation, so we're very clear. Because I believe the motion was effectively referred to staff for a report. Which means staff will look at the contents, the number of items that are there. Provide some message, some analysis on those and bring them back to council. Uh, with either a recommendation which could be received, or it could be to enact, or it could be don't for whatever reason. I think what Counselor Long is saying is uh, his interpretation, I believe, was it should be referred to staff for consideration. Uh, that it would simply remain with staff to take into account going forward. Those are very different motions, depending upon what the intent was, I think Counselor Richter articulated her intent for a report.
Thanks, so um I'm gonna go uh to uh Counselor Woodruff, and then if Counselor Long wishes to make an amended motion, motion, we'll go back to Counselor Long, okay? Counselor Woodruff?
Yeah, I'm just gonna add that, um, you know, I, I, I understand the mover wants this to go to staff in this form. But I wish they'd been given a bit more attention than that, I mean, the eight hours that I've been sitting here. Um, you know, I think maybe we could have, you know, processed some of these and actually reformed certain portions of the budget process. I don't know what we did, you know, I, I'm not gonna belabor that, but for the eight hours, I would have preferred to actually have given some of these. Concrete reasonable suggestions, some, some debate and. And now they're gonna, now they're gonna go back, and I think some of them maybe would have been definitively discussed and rejected, and now staff are working on them, so. I hate to say I'm agreeing with Counselor Long a little bit, but I would have preferred that they'd been processed in the normal way, notices of motion are processed. Um, I don't care if it's nineteen or one or two, I think that some of these could have received debate and could have been carried on. Um, versus not quite sure where they're gonna go and what's gonna come back. I, I hope it's not gonna come back as a memo sort of outlining how challenging some of them are, or how challenging all of them are, I'm hoping. You know, I would have preferred to have gotten some council input prior to a staff report on these. So I, I think I'm gonna vote against the referral, just because I wish we had spent the day on these and and not uh a to-do list thing.
That's good clarity, I, I'm along the same lines as Counselor Woodruff and Counselor Long, is that. This should form part of the discussion and they can come back, and at that point, if the council decides to make decisions on them, it's just to. Get some input from staff on it, from the discussions today, from this list. And some of these items in this room were embedded in the discussion, so if Counselor Long wishes to make that amendment.
You know, your worship, I'm sorry to say, I don't, I, I, I agree with Counselor Woodruff, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote against it and uh save, save ta- staff a lot of time and money.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Ferguson. Counselor Ferguson, I think you might be muted.
I think that's, that's uh, a Zoom challenge. Um, I think that some of us, if not all of us, are struggling with, you know, what we do with uh. These particular notices of motion. Some of them indeed have been researched by some of us, if not all of us, um, asking questions of staff. Um, doing our own uh checking and, and seeing what would work, what's feasible. Some of these things we talked about during the budget process. It, and um, you know, I'm just wondering it how the, you know, at the beginning of this meeting, um. Uh, Dr. McIntosh talked about uh priorities of the low, medium or high, some, maybe some of these particular. Would be low, medium or high as well, although some members of council didn't like that. That measuring process, but I, I find myself struggling to see, you know, what staff can do and what they can't do and uh. Council has to be able to at least um. Break it down in some form as to what's important and what's not, and I, I just feel like um. Counselor Long and Counselor Woodward, I mean, I'm, I'm at a challenge as to which ones of these. Are more important than other, which one of these are an extra li- a bit of time for staff to work on when they already have a number of things as well. So I have a challenge with this.
Thank you, Counselor Richter?
Okay, I'm confused here as to why we're all of a sudden playing politics with this. But in order to take the politics out, I'd like to amend the motion to say that the list. Uh, of notices of motion be referred to staff. At their upcoming workshop with Dr. McIntosh for information purposes. And to help inform their discussion.
Thank you, is there a second or? Counselor Arneson? So on that amendment, which is almost the motion, but I'm sure Wendy can incorporate the amending words in there. I'll call the question, all those in favor? And opposed? Counselor Long opposed? Okay, thank you, and so now back to the main motion as amended. Call the question, all those in favor?
No, 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 no.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I just see your hand went up, okay.
It's been amended, right?
Yeah, Counselor Long?
Yeah, so amended or not, uh, you know, this is one council's. Uh, exercise here, and I appreciate that that's what the, the council wishes to do, I look through each one of them, I can, I, I wrote a no besides just about all of them. Because I don't agree with them. So for information or not, I mean, I guess for information, they're already out there, and they should be already out in the public too, I imagine, because this is a public meeting. So really, this is confusing the issue in my, in my mind, you've got a productive workshop, staff already have an agenda for. The meeting with Dr. McIntosh following uh debriefing what we've got done today. So uh, whether it's being referred for information or a report, I'm glad it's not a report, but even for information. Uh, I'm, I can support that, and I don't think council should either.
Fair enough, thank you, uh, Counselor Woodruff?
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna, I think I'll support this version, um, if that's what the mover wants. I mean, I, for me, I would have preferred that each one, so what's gonna happen to them after they're discussed with Dr. McIntosh and staff? Presumably with no members of council present, I mean, what's gonna happen to them after that?
They, well, it's, it's up to um anyone. Counselor Richter could bring them back, uh, once we've had these discussions and bring them back as motions, it doesn't stop.
They be moved, I mean, they may be ruled out of order for being brought back again, act exactly how they are?
No, it wouldn't be, because they haven't been acted on.
And you'd be able to do that if they were moved identically, you'd be able to rule them out of order as already disposed of by council?
I don't believe so, because we haven't disposed of them, we just referred them.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I'd be fine with it, it's, I'm trying to keep an open discussion on a workshop, so that we can all kind of move ahead on budget and get some ideas on the table. Trying to, you know, keep it as a, at a workshop, unfortunately, we do have to provide some direction and one way of direction is by, is by resolution, so. I guess that's why we find ourselves here. I'll call the question on the motion as amended, all those in favor? And opposed? Counselor Long is opposed, it carries. Um, I wanna thank uh Gord for um working with us today, it's uh.
Mr. Mayor, is it a small point of order?
Sure, go ahead.
Didn't we have to have a motion to move um the um inclusion and diversity framework up to uh? Uh, or ref- formally refer it to C P C, so it moves up?
I, I think we could, I think, I think what might be better is bring it back to next meeting, so that there's a notice of motion on, on the uh agenda. A little bit, whereas it's a little bit filled out, so the public know, because it's not on this agenda, maybe just for transparency, it, it could be done today. But it could also be done at the next meeting.
Well, why don't we just do it today, because we've talked about it today?
If you wanna move it, then.
Yeah, I'll move that the um.
I'll second it.
Inclusion and diversity framework be referred to C P C.
Okay, second by Counselor Kuntz. Call a question on that, all those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously, thank you, thanks for reminding me about that. Um, again, my speech, uh, Gord, thanks a lot, appreciate it, and thank council for taking the time today uh to, to go through this. Uh, certainly, it's uh, there's a lot of work to be done, but I think, you know, the, the desire at the last budget, what I heard council say was that we wanted a different process. And I don't know where to start, but this is what's a good starting point, uh, start at a pretty high level and start bringing it down and getting input from everyone. And this obviously, I think, has changed the process already, because we didn't do this kind of a, a discussion on budget i- in the past, so. Uh, we've already changed uh the process and we'll continue to work through it, uh, to do the best we can for our, our residents. So again, thank you very much, uh, with that, uh, I think I'll ask for a motion to terminate. Counselor Davis, I saw his lips move, I think he moved it, Counselor Whitmarsh seconds it. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed, and it carries.
Thank you, Dr. McIntosh, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McIntosh, thank you, staff.
Thank you, Gord.
Thank, thank you, everyone.